This conference will now be recorded.
To our Commissioners Meeting of June 27th. All times on this agenda are approximate. Consideration of items may require more or less time than is scheduled. Items on the agenda may be taken out of order. The public body may combine two or more agenda items for consideration, and the public body may remove an item from the agenda or delay discussion relating to an item on the agenda at any time. Public comment is designated for discussion only. The public has the opportunity to address the Commission on any matter not appearing on the agenda. However, no action may be taken on any matter raised until the matter itself has been specifically included on the agenda as an item upon which action may be taken. Additionally, public comment may be heard on any item listed on the agenda. Persons are invited to submit comments in writing and/or attend and make comments on any agenda item at the Lander County Commissioners Board Meeting. All public comment may be limited to three minutes per person at the discretion of the Commission. Please note that the public body may interrupt the open meeting and exclude the public for the purpose of having an attorney-client discussion of potential and existing litigation which is pursuant to NRS 2410153B2. I'll call this meeting to order. Ron, would you please send the lights this morning? We'll have a moment of silence. Lander County Commissioners may break for lunch from 12:00 PM to 1:15 PM. Any agenda item may be taken out of order, may be combined for consideration by the public body, and items may be pulled or removed from the agenda at any time. We'll go into Commissioners' reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended. Dee, we'll start with you. Okay. Kathy? All right.
Nothing.
Yeah?
Nothing.
Report.
Nothing.
Right?
Nothing.
Okay. That was easy. We'll move into staff reports on meetings, conferences, and seminars attended.
Good morning, Commission. So, as everybody knows, tonight, hopefully, weather permitting, no wind, we will be spraying for mosquitoes. So, beekeepers, dog water, everything like that. Eye on that. I want to thank JR again for continuing to kill crickets. He put out, I don't know how many tons of bait, and keep them out of town. So, thank you for that, JR. We appreciate it. We're gonna have the Fourth of July celebration in the park here. Hopefully, as many of you can make it as possible. That should be a good one. Thanks, Sean and his staff, for putting that together. And something that is a pretty big deal, 12- to 17-year-olds can go to endalllicensing.com and get a free hunting and fishing license. I know that the tags have already been applied for this year, but any of the kids that don't have that, if we can spread the word, maybe we can get some of these kids out now with orders fishing and hunting. They can go on there and get a free one. So, the last thing I want to do is just congratulate Mitch Dalmagala. He was inducted into the Hall of Fame. We're gonna put him on our newsletter coming up, and hopefully, we can steal as much from him as possible. I know that Mike's working with us on, hopefully, cornering it. She's a pretty humble man that doesn't want to be noticed very often, but we'll try to get him cornered up so he can be noticed because he's done a lot for our community. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Bert. So, we'll move into our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered routine and may be acted upon by the Board of County Commissioners without extensive discussion. Any member of the Board or any citizen may request that an item be taken from the consent agenda, discussed, and acted upon separately during this meeting. Consent agenda materials are available at the Lander County Clerk's Office for viewing, and copies are available for a nominal charge. One, approval of June 27th, 2024 Agenda Notice. Two, approval of April 25th, 2024 Meeting Minutes. Three, approval of May 9th, 2024 Meeting Minutes. Four, approval of May 23rd, 2024 Meeting Minutes. Five, approval of June 20th, 2024 Meeting Minutes. And six, approval of payroll change requests. And am I correct in saying we received no minutes? Did you guys? Okay. So, I'll hear a motion, I think, for just item number one on the consent agenda.
I'll make the motion that we approve the, accept the agenda notice for June 27th.
Okay. Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. All right, before we get started, just letting everybody know, we have four public hearings today. So, I mean, we can limit public comment to three minutes. Never have we, nor will we, but I'm asking for everybody's consideration just to keep that in mind that we do have a full agenda today, and just try to keep it as condensed as possible. We'll move into item one, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the payment of bills.
Yeah.
And, yeah, we're gonna pull checks 224, 234, and 21093.
I'll make the motion that we approve the bills, aside from those two checks.
And a motion?
I'll second it.
And a second? All in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. And then?
I'll make a motion that we approve check number 224, 234, and check 211092.
I'll second.
Should that be check 211092 or 093?
93.
Okay, so 93.
93, okay.
Do I have a motion to approve those two?
I'll second.
There's been a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I do approve 211093, but I will abstain from 224, 234, as made to my client.
And I abstain from 21093, as it's made up to me.
Okay. Okay, so, we're gonna start off here. Our first public hearing is at 9:15, so we're gonna have to wait until that time. So, we might just take a short break until then. But just to let everybody know, the public hearings are set for a scheduled time, but since we have four of them back-to-back, we'll just be taking them one at a time. So, it might not necessarily, the first one will start on time, but every one after won't be at the advertised time, which we're okay doing that. But I just want to make sure everybody's aware of that. So, we'll go ahead and take a break until 9:15. Are we good?
Are we good?
All right, guys. We're gonna get back at it here. So, we're gonna start, or soon as we start recording here.
Yeah.
Are we recording?
Yep.
Okay. So, we're gonna be starting our 9:15 AM public hearing. Review, consideration, and possible action on zone change application number 24-0012, which was filed by Robert and Tammy DeValle to change the zoning on APN 002-330-11 from C1 Commercial to C2 General Commercial to allow for outdoor storage and sales in conjunction with a farm and feed retail store. The subject property is located on the north corner of the intersection of Carson Road and Nevada State Route 305, 101 Carson Road, Battle Mountain, Nevada, 89820. This was considered at the April 17th, 2024 Planning Commission meeting, and forwarded a recommendation of approval with no additional conditions.
Good morning, Commissioners. Thank you. So, you have seen this item before you a couple months ago. I think it was in May. Unfortunately, there wasn't a quorum decision on the item, so we had to bring it back. There was a condition that was added by the Commissioners to not allow storage or sales of live animals outdoor. That was the only condition that was added, besides just the standard ones from the Planning Commission.
Okay. Would, so question, so that condition, that last condition that was added, is that, so if changing it to C2, would C2 normally allow for storage of animals and whatnot?
No.
It wouldn't? Okay. So, why would that condition have to be added if the zoning C2 doesn't allow for it anyway?
That was a condition from the Commissioners.
All right. Just a question. Commission, have any questions? Okay, does the public have any questions or comments on the zone change? Okay, hearing none, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the zone change application number 24-0012 filed by Robert and Tammy DeValle to change the zoning from APN storage, from C1 Commercial to C2 General Commercial to allow outdoor storage of sales in conjunction with a farm and feed retail store.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We'll move to 1.3, which is our next public hearing, for consideration, discussion, possible action to amend and/or approve or disapprove ordinance number 2024-01, in ordinance repealing Lander County Code, Chapter 8.45, prohibition of medical marijuana establishments, creating Chapter 5.28 Cannabis Establishments in Title V, Business License and Regulations, moving, reenacting, and amending the provisions of Chapter 8.46, recreational and medical marijuana cultivation facilities in Title VIII, Health and Safety, to the new Chapter 5.28 Cannabis Establishments in Title V, Business Licenses and Regulations to allow, and, let me see, to allow, and license the operation of medical cannabis establishments, including cultivation facilities, independent testing laboratories, production facilities, and dispensaries, and adult-use cannabis establishments, including cultivation facilities, independent testing laboratories, production facilities, distributors, and retail stores as authorized under Chapter 678A through 678D of the Nevada Revised Statutes, repealing Chapter 8.46, recreational and medical marijuana cultivation facilities, and providing other matters relating thereto.
Okay, Commission, before we get started, I have to disclose to the public, as I did last time, that I am a business partner and a managing member with my brother Joe Ramos and Rule Remedies, who will be presenting on this today. So, I don't have any involvement in this item, and I'll be stepping out.
Okay, thank you, Bert. Bill, is that adequate disclosure?
Yes.
Morning, Mike. Good morning. Mike LaPelt, Chief Deputy District Attorney for the Record. Morning, Mr. Chair and fellow Commissioners. We were before you on this matter back April 25th, 2024, was when the ordinance was introduced and first read. Today is the public hearing. Wanted to start with a kind of a brief explanation of the ordinance and the effect of this ordinance, and what the process may be moving forward. First, the Lander County Code currently has Chapter 8.45, prohibition of medical marijuana establishments. That was adopted when medical marijuana establishments were first authorized in the state of Nevada. And Lander, like most counties at the time, created an ordinance that prohibited all medical marijuana establishments. Then later, Lander County adopted Chapter 8.46, which allowed and authorized the recreational marijuana only for cultivation purposes. And that's what currently exists in the Chapter 8.46. This, this ordinance came about, there was discussion, there was, prior to April 25th, 2024, there was a request to consider changing the county code. And in fact, the Chair directed our office to put together a draft so that the Commission could take a look at what that ordinance may look like. The ordinance that's before you essentially eliminates the two chapters that I just referred to that exist currently in the Lander County Code, Chapters 8.45 and 8.46. And it would replace them with a new chapter in the Business Licenses and Regulations Title V. And this ordinance allows medical and adult-use, independent testing, production, distribution facility, dispensaries, or retail stores. This ordinance does not, and if the Board moves forward and adopts this or something, an amendment or amended version of this ordinance, additional work will still have to be accomplished as it relates to zoning regulations or restrictions, as well as the state, and I brought this up last time at the April meeting, the state amended the fees that the different entities or establishments are charged at the state level. Lander County, when it adopted its ordinance, basically followed the state fee structure. And this ordinance doesn't, didn't take into account the changes that occurred at the state level. And so, moving forward, that would be something that we would bring back before you. One other thing that I wanted to point out and is related to the fact that zoning regulations or restrictions would need to be addressed if, these establishments would be, and by law, at least in the medical marijuana, Chapter 678, the law requires that they be only in commercial or industrial zoning districts. And I think that makes sense. We, I mean, businesses are in commercial or industrial zones to begin with. The, if the Board decides to move forward and adopts an ordinance today on this, I would suggest that the Board make the effective date out in the future, such as January 1st of 2025, so that the Planning Department, Planning Commission, and you can, take time to put together the proper zoning regulations or ordinances to address the zone changes relating to these establishments, as well as to give us time to make any amendments relating to the fees that Lander County would charge for the business in this, either medical or adult use. So, today, the possible action before you is to either adopt the ordinance as it is drafted and before you. You may amend it and adopt it today, or you may reject or deny passage of this ordinance. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any questions for the?
So, Mike, on this, this is, so we're voting on this state, this document here. So, if we put that out to January 1st, 2025, that wouldn't affect if the decision was made for a ballot measure? Because you would, that would allow it to be put into place. Or does that eliminate it? Then this, then we just start the process? This, if, I, I don't know that the Board would want to try and take both approaches. Well, I guess, in a short answer. The, if the Board is approving this with an effective date in January, then it kind of makes the ballot question mute.
Okay.
If the Court, if the Commission is not inclined to pass this ordinance or adopt this ordinance or an amended version of this ordinance today, then you may move forward however you'd like, with, whether it be ballot or in the future.
Okay. Any other questions from the Commission for Mike?
Quick on the ballot. There are two ways it can go on the ballot. One is for the Commission to call for it. The other is for the public to circulate petitions. If the public tries the petition route, it will not get on the ballot unless somebody can figure out a way to circulate them between now and the end of business tomorrow. Because it has to be 130 days before the election, 130 days before the election, believe it or not, is tomorrow. So, just so everybody's aware that that will happen. If there is an attempt to do that, it's gonna be down the road unless this Commission decides otherwise.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
So, I'm gonna go ahead and open it up for just comment here with the Commission first. Is there any Commissioners that'd like to speak on it?
I will. I want to start at one end and see, or do you want to?
It doesn't matter. Whoever wants to speak.
All right, so, of course, I'm going to. From the last time, from our last meeting, I've received several calls, and I've done some little bit of research because I wanted to make sure of the soapbox I'm standing on was not just my soapbox. So, I started attending just a handful of NA meetings because I wanted to ask them if, when I first got there, I explained to them, there was only about six of them there. There's normally like eight, but I don't know, didn't know who, how many that was there. I didn't want to know that stuff in advance. So, I went to them and explained to them who I was and why I was there because I wanted to make sure that I wasn't making a problem worse by, since I was the one who brought this whole subject back up. So, my biggest, my first and foremost question was, was this your gateway? Was ever THC your gateway to where you're at currently? And they all, across the board for the group that was there that night, the answer was no. And so, I said, well, what do you believe was the beginning of your use of this, these, where you're at now? And they said, mental illness. Across the board, every single one of them said mental illness was where they were. A lot of them said that alcohol was their starting gateway, and it went from there. And the mental illness was by far the reason, and the lack of being able to seek mental illness or even knowing that they were mentally ill. To the point to, as sad as this sounds, one of the young men, when they were reading their little preamble and came to a section on there, it was, which was quite disturbing, when it said, you know, prayers that, me as a human being. And he stopped and said to the other group, and yes, he was younger. He goes, what's a human being? And I'm not, as God is my witness. I was horrified at that statement. And the other guys were very good about trying. I was horrified. Anyway, and so, and also, there was a gentleman in there who, in his former life, was a drug dealer or started, had started dealing at the age of 13 or 15. And he had said that wherever dispensaries were, he was put out of business because their, his business plummeted, and so he would move to a different community where they did not have dispensaries. And I just found that very interesting. And he just said, because it just shut him down. And so, it didn't stop him from not dealing. He just moved to different communities that didn't, or different states that didn't have it legalized. So, went to a few of those meetings. My heart, you know, I definitely, and if I have a little crack in my voice, you know, I, it changed my view of that whole situation by listening to those guys. And wish I could attend more of those meetings, but they were confused of why I was there, and I just did not want to be any catalyst of stopping them from going to their meetings or making things worse. So, there's still three of them out of the group that want contact with me, that I do nothing to try to encourage them. But, yes, that was very disturbing. But then, I have had several calls throughout, periodic, since our last meeting. And it's very interesting what the federal government has started to do since the use of opioids and all the lawsuits and everything. Doctors are now afraid to prescribe opioids. So, what they're doing with patients are that, for example, this one patient started out with non-smoker's lung cancer, spread to her lungs, her ribs. Now she has bone cancer. And doctors will no longer prescribe pain medicine to her because they're all under the microscope. And so, they are insisting that she attend pain clinics, which is absolutely ludicrous because her, she's not, she's, it's not curable, and it's now in her bones. And I'm just, it's very disturbing. I had another family member contact me. Their mother has Alzheimer's. To the point now that she's actually on hospice. But the only way they could keep her from grinding her teeth, the point of cracking her teeth, were to give her the THC gummies. And so, these are all things that, for people who do not experience this stuff, that families are horrified. And there's other families, you know, the question was brought up, why, you know, they can go to Elko, they can go to Winnebago. And they're, not everybody can do that. There's not, everybody has transportation, just like the people have, don't have the transportation, you know, like veterans to get because we have no buses, we have no transport. They have no way to get to these places. So, either. So, that's just a facet for people to kind of look at as well. And it's, you know, and the other, the last thing was, and this is within my family. You know, I had a relative that was, had been struggling with alcohol for many, many years. And if she, she started utilizing, I'm not sure how they work, they're the little vaping things that have THC in them, and has completely gone off alcohol. And had she not, she'd been dead from liver failure. And so, she's, you know, functional, and her family chooses to be back around her because she is not drinking alcohol anymore. And I know that alcohol, THC, you know, what it does to the body. The one thing alcohol does is when you go from withdrawals from it, it's an absolute nightmare because I have friends who have done that. You don't have withdrawals from THC. And if people struggle to get off THC, it's because they're struggling with mental illness, and they are not dealing with those issues. And so, there is a balance thing there. I'm by no means a doctor. I just ask a lot of questions to a lot of people that feel comfortable enough to answer me freely. So, that's about as much as I can beat that horse.
Okay. Any other Commissioners?
I have a comment. I support putting in the establishment, but I also support the fact that the voters should have the say in it first. You know, I have nothing against it. I just believe that the citizens of Lander County should have more say in it than they have, they're having. That's my only comment.
Okay.
Any other? I agree with Dee. I do as well. Off of what Kathy was saying, I received some phone calls from constituents, too. And a point well said, that was said to me on several of them, was, that made me think as well, is the fact that, you know, people, yeah, you can go to Winnebago or Elko, but also, being sitting in the position I was elected to be in, that's a revenue generation, too, that is taken away from the citizens as a whole as Lander County, too. That's been a thing on my mind. I'd like the ballot. That's why I asked the question, because that was the discussion the last time. You know, I think it was, I think it's gonna, I believe firmly that it won't have the result that it had last time. I just, it was a large number that were against it, but there were some good presentations to indicate myself as well to the benefits of it, too.
I have a question for our Legal. So, I know the feds are looking at changing the classification of marijuana from Schedule, and I don't know the numbers, but from one Schedule to another.
Yes.
How would that affect marijuana locally for us if the feds were to change the scheduling of that? If the feds were to change the scheduling of that, like from a schedule three to a schedule one or vice versa?
You know, I'm really not sure. I mean, we've been looking at it because we have cases pending currently. One in particular, in terms of searching for marijuana. I've got a public defender hotly saying that you can't search for marijuana, period. That isn't my position. And when I look at it, methamphetamine is, is a legal drug. It can be prescribed. We search for it all the time. Because the vast majority of people don't have a prescription for methamphetamine and the methamphetamine they get isn't coming from a pharmacy. It's, you know, something that somebody's cooked up in a local lab. So those kinds of issues, but I don't think that's what you're worried about, but I'm just pointing out. I think we'd still, it's from a law enforcement point of view, and maybe the sheriff has a different perspective than I do, but from a law enforcement point of view, I don't think it's gonna make a difference. I guess I'll find out on my case, that since that is one of the issues that they're, they're claiming that a dog alerted to marijuana, not to methamphetamine. I'm claiming it doesn't matter. We'll find out what Shirley thinks. But anyway, that said, it certainly makes life simpler if the feds make it legal under certain circumstances. But it's not gonna change things all that much because it's just to move schedules. It's not to permit it for recreational use. And we have it for recreational use and this ordinance would also allow sales for recreational use. And so I don't think it's gonna have any effect from currently. Maybe Mike's got a different perspective.
Mike. Yeah, Mike, for the record, I, this, or if, if the feds do change the schedule, I don't see it having really any effect to this ordinance or to the cannabis industry in Nevada as a practical matter. I, I think you might see some change in, in how things are regulated maybe. But that's, that's kind of behind the scenes between the businesses and, and the FDA or the state kind of entities or agencies that regulate. Just like Mr. Shaffer was pointing out, when we are talking about pharmaceuticals, they are regulated already. It's just a matter of what column or how they are regulated. And so those types of things would, would forever be regulated. It's not like the feds or the state would not regulate marijuana or cannabis any, any longer. But I see some relaxation possibly of, of regulation, but it'd still be regulated.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Any other commissioners, comments, concerns, questions? Okay, so I'm gonna open it up for public comment. If you would like to speak and address the issue, please raise your hand. I'll recognize you and you can come to the front. Yes, Jerry?
I'll kick it off for you. My name is Jerry Anis, for your records. Just real quick, I reached out to a number of your constituents and the vast majority are in favor of, of having a question on the ballot. They want to vote. I don't know which way they would vote, but I know personally, I, I talked to forty people. Thirty-nine wanted on the ballot. One had no opinion.
That's all I got for you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Thank you. Amy?
So I have permission to do a presentation and I'm gonna talk as fast as humanly possible. But yeah, relax because she knows me. I promise I'll talk fast. And if anybody would like this, because I am gonna talk fast, then I can send it to you. Okay, so very quickly, I'm going to just do a quick presentation on youth and marijuana. That's my focus. And so I'm gonna discuss the impact marijuana has on the developing brain, why the perception is decreasing of the risks and consider different alternatives for Lander County for you guys to think about. Is it showing up yet? Okay, what we're seeing in our youth, I'm talking very quickly. We all know that with the legalization, it increased availability and it decreased the perception of harm for not just youth, but youth and adults. National harm, this is a little bit of a dated, that's about five years old, this graph. But you know, with COVID and everything, it kind of shut down a lot of things. But we are seeing that the percentage in eighth, 10th and 12th grade of perception of harm is decreasing and it continues to decrease to this day. I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get caught up. So this is a little bit lengthy because I want to make sure I read this out. It's not just commissioners and voters who struggle with the question about Nevada's legalized marijuana. Kids and teens have questions too. Their inquiries focus on navigating the middle and high school years with the added layer of temptation. How does pot affect the human brain? What's the difference between medicinal and recreational marijuana? What are some, why are some of the strains more potent than others? And if it's legal, why isn't it safe? A quote, in elementary school, kids were told weed was dangerous and now they hear it is legal and medicinal. Says Sarah Grippa, a co-founder of the Marijuana Educational Initiative. And by the way, that's where I've got most of these slides with permission. An online curriculum available to teachers from elementary to high schools. With that said, I'm gonna very quickly address some of the myths and misconceptions about adolescent. Myth number one, it doesn't really affect me. I work with kids, as you know, the juveniles who get in trouble with the system. This is 100% their belief. Quickly, and I'm not a medical doctor, I know we have one in the room, so I'm hanging a blow some of these pronunciations. But neuroplasticity refers to the ability of the brain to change the structure. Not since birth, as the brain had so much rapid growth with all the information we get these days. It continues through the twenties. For boys, I'd like to say forties or fifties, but we're not gonna go into that conversation. So during this time, massive pruning occurs during those teen and early twenty years. It's a great visual of it. If you consider when little kids are just taking in information in massive quantities. In the teen years, that's when it begins to prune. So ages fifteen to eighteen, it's really when it refines the lanes, prunes the trees, however you want to look at it. From eighteen to twenty-two, it gets really a lot of clarity. It helps to, you know, understand what I want to do with my life. You know, they no longer want to be necessarily a professional athlete. Some of those more confusing things, they get focused. So those are really critical years for brain development. That's what I'm trying to get to. The brain stem develops first. The brain stem is where you get overdose. So that's when, I think Kathy or one of you referenced that marijuana doesn't lead to overdose. It doesn't because it's not affecting that part of the brain. The part of the brain that gets affected during adolescent development is that prefrontal cortex right here. The executive functioning part of the brain. So when a kid, when you say to a kid, why were you driving so fast and forgot to put your seatbelt on? That part of the brain may not be fully developed. They get overstimulated. You've got competing things going on. So that part of the brain is what is also affected during adolescent marijuana use. It affects driving, risk-taking behaviors, all of that, and it's not fully developed. So this is the part where I'm probably gonna butcher some things because I'm not a medical person, but it is, like I said, I can get anyone access to this, so I'm just gonna read it based on there. So THC was identified in cannabis in the 1960s. It wasn't until twenty years later, scientists figured out how it worked in the brain. They developed, scientists discovered neurotransmitters with a molecular structure that looks similar to THC. This is how the endocannabinoid system got its name. These neurotransmitters were named after the plant, what they look like. So long and short of it, marijuana stimulates the part of the brain that contains the highest number of these particular receptors. It affects the altered sentence, senses, the changes in mood, the difficulty in thinking, impaired memory, et cetera. So here's a visual of the actual, natural one is, is the white one and the cannabis is almost identical. So THC is the main psychrothoracic compound in marijuana. It's almost identical to the naturally occurring transmitter. So there, that's kind of the science behind it. Because of the similarity in molecular structure, THC mimics the actions of the natural and binds with the brain. And then what happens is the brain, if you're doing marijuana a lot, the brain stops producing the natural. Because now you have the synthetic, you have the alternative. And again, you can butcher me on this because I know you're medical and I am not. But you get the idea. So as you use it and use it and use it, your brain no longer produces the natural. Quickly, couple of scans, the top scan is the normal brain. The surface of the healthy brain looks smooth, full of symmetrical blood flow and activity. This tells us this is the way the brain's supposed to work. An unhealthy brain, this spec image of the unhealthy brain shows holes on the surface, which represents low blood flow and low activity because of substance abuse. After a year of abstinence, the good news is that the brain can recover. The challenge is it has to retrain areas that it needed for adulthood. It will be way more of a struggle for a youth who started using marijuana. Because remember those synapses and those, the pruning may not have occurred. So it's gonna delay the ability, even if they quit, for them to get to maturity and start making different decisions. Especially with some of the higher potency's, which I'm gonna move into. And so first myth, marijuana doesn't really affect me. Busted for adolescence. Myth two, and I am talking so fast. It's fine because it's natural. So students report the following, students report the following regarding marijuana versus alcohol use. This is their perception. Marijuana is more readily available, easier to obtain. It's easier to disguise in school, at home and in public, especially with the vaping. Marijuana produces a more favorable high, is preferred, it's a healthier choice, and they believe they are better drivers. That was kind of interesting, little survey result. It's on the rise. I had a video, but because of condensment, this guy, I, I have the resource, Stanford University, you guys could look it up. Stanford Medical, he, and just look up the Prevention Toolkit. I also have handouts for you guys. It's about seven minutes long and it's so powerful. And he just talks directly about what I'm saying, but he does it and he's way smarter than me. So I won't do that, save you guys, but it's really interesting. Okay, concentrates. So this is where we get into the trouble, okay? It is not natural. THC concentrates come in different forms. The shatter, the stuff on the top, is the highest concentrated form. I think I have some information on that. It's like eighty to ninety percent THC. It's not natural. It's not the stuff that you see growing in a garden, okay? Wax is also quite high, not quite as refined as shatter. Butter, seventy percent, hash oil, hash or honey oil, seventy, sixty percent. Anyway, you get the idea. It's highly concentrated. Dabbing devices, pipes and vape pens, also not natural. In the seventies and eighties, THC was about two to seven percent. When it first came out and it was grown and people, you know, had the little buds, it was two to seven percent. Now it can get up to ninety-five percent between the concentrations and the dabbing process. Seventy, eighty percent in oils. It's very potent. It's manufactured to increase potency through extraction and it's very serious. And we'll get a little bit more into that. Vaping, of course, also includes the propylene glycol, which can do major damage. I think most of you are aware of some of the concerns with vaping. So dabbing, not natural. Concentrated THC wax is heated. There's an aerosol process. You feel the effect quite quickly. Eighty percent THC, very concentrated. It's not what, when you think of the hippies of the seventies, this is not the same. Not natural, candies, gummies. And other miscellaneous things. So that's number two, it's fine because it's natural. Busted. I'm going fast, almost done. Myth three, it's not as bad as drinking and other drugs. The decreased harm, I think we hit that pretty hard. They just say no, it's nothing wrong with it. I had a kid tell me it's kind of like lettuce in a salad. It's a, it's a leaf. There's nothing wrong with it. So you get lots of propaganda. You can see signs. For many reasons, I prefer marijuana over alcohol. Does that make me bad? Marijuana, less toxic, less addictive, less scary. Beer wine, safer. Just, don't just drink fake. And marijuana, safer than alcohol and football. That's propaganda the kids say. Marijuana in the teenage brain, oops, went too fast, just slid right past that. So critical role, and this is where I want to get into the mental health, mental health piece of it, okay? So depression is when the blame, depression happens when the brain is flooded with THC. It decreases the natural production. When the high wears off, appetite, sleep and mood are off or altered. Then the brain reduces the receptors because it's getting it, you know, from, from the non-natural way. And so natural bliss, well-being and joy decrease when we're not using. Suicidal ideation increases. Schizophrenia and bipolar are on the rise from the heavy use of marijuana. You actually, they actually have had kids, and I actually know one, who's had a psychotic break and at one percent marijuana, high concentrated marijuana use. And they're still running around this town, not doing well. Some research shows marijuana can, use can precede symptoms of depression. Girls ages fourteen to fifteen who used it daily were five times more likely to face depression. And heroin, heavy marijuana use is almost seven times more likely than in non-users to be diagnosed with schizophrenia later in life. And of course, the earlier the use, earlier they start, the higher the, the potential. So myth number three, it's not as bad as drinking or doing other drugs, busted. Myth number four, it's medicine. And we went over that quite a bit. You guys have gone over that. I listened to some of the previous one. It does have some amazing medicinal properties. It does help with nausea, vomiting, stress, anxiety, all those things. Today's use of youth are coming into the age of legalized marijuana, but they haven't really been informed of the differences between adolescent use and adult use. They don't grasp the difference between recreational and medicinal use. There's no denying that the plant exhibits medicinal properties. And, but it's complicated because again, what they're getting isn't necessarily what is medicinal. Their CBD is a real primary part of the medicinal and at, at the dispensaries, it's, it's a mix. And it's, you know, all kinds of different options there. All CBD is regulated. You know what you're getting. You go to the dispensary, you get something that's way higher, like a two to one ratio of THC to CBD. So it's not what they're, it's not the same as the medicinal. So myth number four, it's medicinal. We're gonna say plausible because there are, there are some things that are medicinal involved. But again, I'm talking about adolescent and youth effect. Okay, myth number five, that it's not addictive. I think, I'm not gonna spend a ton of time on this because you can go into just about everywhere and find out it's addictive. I have a whole slide on it and all kinds of information for you, but it's kind of obvious at this point. What does it look like? It, they can't stop using. It's very hard to stop using. We have kids who have to come in and, and take a urine test three times a week, three times a week because they are struggling so much. You know, it affects them socially, mentally, physically. Again, I have a huge slide, but I'm, I'm talking fast. Symptoms of withdrawal, again, kind of standard with any symptom of withdrawal. So myth number five, it's not addictive. We know that it is. Let me see if I have anything. Oh, the data shows if young people have a parent who thinks it's okay, they're sixty-four percent more likely to use regularly. That's just, just a fact. Okay, last myth, it's follow second last, it's fine because it's legal. This is where it gets challenging for us as educators and also as adults with kids and grandkids. Comment from a school counselor, I met at least five students last year alone that have been showing significant signs of drug use and were caught. And they also, they will not stop using weed on a daily basis. Their justification is it's fine because it's legal. If it's legal, it can't be bad. That's what the kids are saying. Kids younger than eighteen years old can get a card, a medical card, if they have two doctor's signatures and parents sign off. Kids older than eighteen, just needed one doctor's signature. Kids twenty-one and older can legally smoke recreationally. It's fine because it's legal. For developed adults, yes. For youth, I'm gonna say no. But again, this is just my opinion. Final myth, disagreement is divisive. A well-functioning organization, like a well-functioning society, requires employees, leaders, community members alike to have productive conversations, even in the face of different views and opinions. In fact, especially in the face of differences. I do appreciate this county's encouragement of different points of view, the ability to talk more than three minutes and being open to considering debate. Thank you for your time. And now just a couple of slides on an alternative that I came up with, that I think, of course, is G. And I'd be a little blunt, of course. So dispensary versus medical facility alternative. This is what happens when we get a dispensary. This is my alternative. We get a medical facility because there are people in this town who do have medical needs and it does help. It helps with all kinds of things medically. So we have it controlled. It's not twenty-four seven downtown and when you walk by, you get a contact high. It's through prescription process. They go to a facility. I just took pictures of our, our current Lander County clinic. It could probably be in a back part of the clinic or it could even be in one of those back buildings that the GBC just gave back to the county. But it's an option. They come in, it's sealed, it's regulated, they get their medical marijuana and the kids don't even really know about it because it's not this. And then my final, it's just one thought, there are other thoughts, but, but that would be something that could be regulated, contained and still meet the need of Lander County citizens without sending the message to kids and getting more access to kids. Because if you have dispensary in this town, it's way easier to access. Because if you have dispensary in this town, it's way easier to access it. So finally, all change is not progress, my final slide. We are all striving to improve the well-being of our society. P S, I love this little town. I love everything that you guys are doing to make it beautiful and to improve it. Austin's improving. I just saw the library pictures. I can't wait to go down there. And we want, I want personally, as a member of this community, with a sixth generation grandchild, sixth generation Lander County now, grandchild who just came, she's cuter than cute. Anyway, I want to continue to make it, but when we come back, it just feels like it's a wholesome, wonderful community. So what is the purpose of progress? The purpose of progress isn't, let's get a Walmart or we need more fast food stores. It's human flourishing. Not, but not every good thing has human flourishing as its primary aim. Additionally, there are unintended consequences to all seemingly good things. We must balance the interest of human flourishing as a whole and consider personal achievement, political power, economic gain and social well-being. It's not an easy decision for you guys to make. What brings out the most good for the most people? Access to medical marijuana for adults through a controlled facility with limited hours of operation still meets the community's health needs with the least amount of harm to our youth while retaining our small-town, family-oriented ethos. And then I have very quickly, I thought one to each side. I didn't make enough, so everybody. So I have one more little quick.
This is wrapping it up.
This is wrapping it up. This is it. Thank you, ma'am. So, really quickly, this is my cheese. First concern, alcohol, marijuana. My first concern. With the dispensary, it lowers the perception of harm and risk, which is us. An alternative is a medical facility available through a clinic type of thing that doesn't do that. The second concern is marijuana grows on personal property. That's a personal concern. With the dispensary, you cannot have a private grow for up to twenty-five miles. So now law enforcement will have to cite people who are growing their own marijuana in their house or in their yard. That's at that lower concentration. A medical facility not classified as a dispensary with limited hours of operation and controlled access would have less government control over individuals. As a constitutionalist, I think that makes more sense. Health and safety concerns, I hit that pretty hard. It's not what it used to be back in the seventies and early eighties. So people who grow, who use marijuana for health reasons would be able to access it locally and more controlled in their own house versus the kids getting these concentrated deals. The last one is drug dealing and criminality. With the dispensary, youth can get it quite quickly, so your criminality is going to go up. And youth will utilize adult buyers to buy just like they do with alcohol. Without a dispensary, the adult buyers have one less option. They gotta at least travel or they gotta have somebody bring it in. Without, with the dispensary, law enforcement would now have to criminalize growers in their own home because they become insolent. So the police would be pretty busy having to go out and deal with people who do it for their own medical or recreational use as adults. And that's it for me.
Thank you, Amy. A good presentation. I know there's other questions. I'm just going to respond to some of the stuff that Amy said here. So, number one, I want to tell you that I agree with you one hundred percent. That I'm not a proponent and I don't think anybody up on this is more that, or a proponent that marijuana is safe for children. But we might as well include alcohol, cigarettes, vapes, energy drinks. And let's even go with something that's more addictive than drugs, sugar. Right? We can even get into vaccines. What's the, are they safe and effective? What we're dealing with here is the right of an adult to choose for themselves. What they feel is necessary for themselves. Is it right for children? Absolutely not. Not for one minute do I believe that. I mean, we could, we have the power of this board. We could make this a dry county. We could eliminate alcohol. We could eliminate tobacco. We could eliminate it. We could, if we wanted to. But would we? I mean, it's, adults have choices to, I mean, they can make those choices for themselves. Doesn't mean that kids are not going to do it. No, they're going to go do it, Amy. Come on. You, you know what I'm saying? I was in high school. I went out and drank. And it's just, it's just, I just want to say that I agree with you, but that's not what, that's not what we're faced with. The decision that we're making here today is like, are we going to make something, build an industry which produces revenue for your county, which gives an adult the right to make a choice and decision for themselves? That's what we're looking at. It's not whether we're gonna let kids buy dope or that we're okay with that, because not, not in a minute am I for that.
I mean, I never implied it. I just wanted to understand the perception of dispensary brings to the people.
Yes, exactly. But we, but that's, that's just not limited to marijuana. There's a lot of, there's a lot of things that we could, if we wanted to, if you wanted to give a presentation on what are the effects of vapes with children? What are the effects of energy jips? I mean, I'm sure we'd see a similar thing. It's, it's not good. It's toxicity, right? It's bad stuff. It, it, it stops development. It causes all sorts of problems. So anyway, that's, that's just what I wanted to say with it. I do, it was a good presentation and I agree with you. Kids have no business doing the stuff, so. Any other questions?
Well, I just have to say, you know, as a commission and on the back of that is that we're put up here to make the decision and not cherry pick what decisions we want to go, and I'm not saying this in a sarcastic or a snotty way, please. We don't, that we cherry pick what decisions we want to put on the ballot. If that was the case, then anything that came before us basically would be going on the ballot and you wouldn't have, which I'm sure some of you would be happy about, not to have a commission. However, there's still decisions that have to be made. And, and just like the young, well, he wasn't a young man anymore, the dealer that I met said, dealt his whole life. And unfortunately, the dispensary isn't going to make a difference on the street if it's, if it's not controlled, that they're still going to get it. But the sad part about that, the dispensary, it's controlled for whomever is utilizing it. The off the street is not where you have the mixture of fentanyl, you have the bug sprays, you have all of the other garbage, you know, that has been brought into that. I have a young woman that I met a handful of years ago before this initiative, before I was even thinking on the commission, that had fentanyl-laced marijuana and went to the brink of death, came back, was scared to death because it, that's what it was. And it was the fentanyl that about killed her, which thankfully, thank God, she was able to clean her life up because of that, because it scared her so badly. And so there's where you go, you know, you try to say the safety, you know, the juggling, you know, trying to get the stuff off the streets. And they're going to get it and I'd rather, you know, try to slim the chances with the twenty-five, you know, to stop the dealers as well. And I, I spoke to a couple of law enforcement and said, you know, was it gonna, is this going to, the dispensary going to cause you to have more manpower and things like that? And they said, no, it's not going to because without probable cause, they have to be in a house to begin with. There, there's no reason for them to be in there. And so they're not going to be chasing all of that down. And so, that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Any other commissioners? Hey, we, we had a question out there earlier.
Just come to the front, please, and so we, the mic can pick up what you're saying.
David Briggs. You know, every commissioner up here. It's not a question. I do agree with Amy too. If it's a dispensary, it doesn't matter. I mean, it's just like having a liquor store. Kids are going to get it. Regardless. But my thing is, is on growing on personal property, I do have paper here. I have two family members that are legal to grow in the state of Nevada per medical use, even if there is a dispensary. And the reason why is because dispensaries don't always carry certain strains that work for things like Amy was saying, CBD. CBD is a wonderful, wonderful medicine for people. Not all dispensaries carry certain CBD strains that people in my family need. So that's what I wanted to reiterate. Just if it, I'm not for a dispensary. I know we need revenue for this county and stuff, but I'm not for a dispensary. But you know what? I'm not for a liquor store either. I grew up here. I went out and drank too. All right? That's the reason. But if people are concerned that they want to grow for themselves and if there's a dispensary, there is a way to do it for yourself. Go to a doctor and tell them, I want to grow my own in the community I live and it has a dispensary. I have a friend that lives up in Sun Valley Reno. He's been fighting Washoe County for years and he finally won. They've been trying to shut down his medical grow for himself and his wife because he's within twenty-five miles of a dispensary. Well, the state says, if a doctor says you can grow because they invited, how the state states it is, is if you grow a strain that they do not provide, then you are allowed to grow. But you cannot grow a strain that they are providing because then you are in violation of law. That's all I wanted to add to that, just so people are aware, there are, there are alternatives. I don't go to dispensary for my family because I don't trust nobody but myself. I know what my family's getting that comes out of a garden. Just like if you grow your own fruits and vegetables.
Thank you for.
That's all I wanted to say. Thank you very much.
Do we have another question here? Or comment? Please come to the front if you're going to speak. It's important that we just get it on the record.
Ryan Conder. I'm familiar with the rules and regulations moderately. I believe that, that if you had a medical card prior to dispensary coming into your community and you have that medical card that your grandfather did to grow, so I mean, I don't think that's going to necessarily take away everybody's right to grow their own, but, you know, and I've said this before, marijuana is a tool in the medical toolbox that is indispensable and I'm not going to even go further on that, but also I wanted to say that the state recently combined my medical and my adult use license together. They're not even separating them anymore. It's adult use and that's it. So.
Thank you. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. All right, do we have more public comment or questions? Yes, sir.
Public hearings, people should know that, I know you said at the beginning, but I want to reiterate, public hearings of other subjects will follow in order after this one's over.
Yes. Yes, sir.
My name's Lenny Shepherd and I'm not a marijuana user, grower or anything. But the only fair way to get this passed or not passed is put it on the ballot. You five people shouldn't be able to make a decision for six thousand people. It should be on the ballot where they want it or they don't want it. And then it's off everybody's back. That's all I got to say about it.
Thank you, Lenny. So my response to that is we were elected to make those decisions. Why would we even have elections to have commissioners up here? Every time there's a, let me finish. Every time there's a controversial issue or something needs to be done, let's just put it on the ballot. Why would we, why do we even need to be here to conduct business, Lenny?
Well, I'm kind of wondering that. That, that's what we vote for you for, but we should.
That's right. But, but if we don't necessarily share your views, then it's bad and we need to put it to everybody else. Because I've, I've had those similar talks with people throughout town because it, it, it is an issue. But a lot of them.
It's a big issue.
Yeah, a lot of them, a high percentage of them have said, you know, that's what we put you in office for, Brian. Personally, the conversations I've had with people.
That's right.
You know, so it's, 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 I just don't think it's fair for you to say that, you know, it's like, you know, we're getting ready to spend multi-million on buildings over here on, on a fire department. Why, why don't we put that back to the voters? It's a large amount of money.
Well, that, the firehouse, that's apples and oranges. The firehouse is protection. And I think, nobody would be mad about that. But as far as this, this is a six thousand people or fifty-six hundred people in the, in the county. And we elect you to do what we think is right, what you think is right. But I'm just saying, I, I don't, I don't know if that, that you can make the decision for, for six thousand people.
All right, well, point's taken.
And whatever. And, and that way it's fair. It's the monkey's off your back if it passes or if it don't pass. Hey, you let the people speak.
All right, thank you.
That's, that's the United States of America.
Thank you.
Legislatures did give us the, the ability to make that decision. So.
You, we have, you have a comment, Andrew?
Andrew Warwood for the record. So, first off, I'd like to state for my public comment that in the future, running for commissioner, if I was voted as commissioner, my vote at this time would be no. And I want that to go on the record of where I would stand. Now, as far as information and different things, Amy covered most of the stuff that I have prepared, but I want you to know, I've been to the Congressional Research Service, so that's a reputable research service, Congressional Research Service. The things that they're coming up with on marijuana and, and a lot of their data, they're, they're going down to twelve years old. Twelve years old, okay? That's where the data's coming from. So, the percentage of individuals twelve years or older who reported past month marijuana use has increased from six point one percent in two thousand and eight to fifteen percent in two thousand twenty-two. Right? That's significant. That's twelve years old. That's fifteen percent of twelve-year-olds. So if I flip to some other data I have that comes from the school research website where you can get school data, two thousand nineteen, twenty-two percent of students' grades nine through twelve reported using marijuana at least one time in thirty days. Eight percent of students reporting using marijuana one or two times during the previous thirty days. Ten percent, this is of that twenty-two percent, reported use three to thirty-nine times and four percent forty or more times within thirty days. Okay? So, the data's already been given. I'm going to skip all, a lot of my other data. One, one point that I'll point out, in legalized states, there has been a five percent increase in vehicle accidents on the roads where marijuana has been legalized. Mixture of marijuana, marijuana with alcohol. Five percent increase across the board, which is significant to our resources, ambulance, emergency response services, with the I-80 corridor right here that we serve where we live on, right? I want to read one thing that will bog down our time just a little bit. This is from the Nevada Mining Association. I believe this was around two thousand eighteen. I'll skip a little bit and get down to Dylan Shaver, who was the vice president of the Nevada Mining Association. After the legalization of marijuana, this is where this comes into play, said, "The question for the mining industry is what now? Nevada's mining industry respects the will of the voters. Nevertheless, in an industry where the use of any controlled substance, illicit or otherwise, is not tolerated on the job site, the topic deserves examination. Because of the complicated federal rules, the critical role safety plays in a mine's culture and because of the lags in testing for impairment, marijuana usage remains incompatible with Nevada's mining industry." There's the vice president of the Nevada Mining Association. Incompatible. Okay? Under federal law, marijuana usage remains illegal and is likely to remain as such. And again, like it or not, the industry is heavily regulated by the United States government. Our mines are on land owned and controlled by federal agencies. Our safety is tightly, tightly monitored by the Federal Mine Safety and Health Administration and our mined products are shipped over state lines under the supervision of the National Transportation Administration. But at the core of this issue is a much higher calling than federal code. We have a responsibility to our employees and their families to ensure mine workplaces are safe. Our employees are exposed to naturally occurring hazards in the environment and any level of impairment is simply unacceptable. When your personal safety is in hand, furthermore, going onto a mine site impaired puts all of one's coworkers at risk, whether operating a haul truck, doing electrical work, or one of the many other highly technical and highly skilled jobs on a site, any level of distraction can threaten the safety and lives of our coworkers. Finally, this is an area where technology hasn't caught up with the public policy, whereas there are many options to test somebody for impairment or alcohol or to see if they are abusing prescription drugs. Tests for marijuana are unsophisticated and untested. Testing somebody's blood for BAC will give an immediate indication of whether that person is impaired. But with legal marijuana use in its infancy, the tests don't measure the impairment just used. The best test will only show whether an employee has used the substance in the last two or three weeks. We've gotten better on that. Some will say it's unfair for any employer to terminate an employee for using marijuana on their off time. Unfortunately, aficionados, for aficionados, the tests for directly correlated for impairment do not exist. If and when technology catches up, mines may very well reexamine zero tolerance policies. Until that happens, mines simply cannot allow one employee to put his or her coworkers and their families at that level of risk. The public viewpoint is changing very, very quickly. Just ten years ago, which this is longer, just ten years ago, voters across the country vehemently rejected proposals to legalize marijuana. Today, as more states legalize possession of the drug, there will be increasing pressure on Congress for a national solution. Today, as more states legalize possession of the drug, there will be increasing pressure on Congress for a national solution. So I'm just gonna stop there. But in the end, the last line he says, today, the reality is this. Our commitment to our people and their families, and we will do whatever it takes to keep them safe, even if it means we're not invited to the fun parties. That's Dylan Schaefer, the vice president of Nevada Mining Association. I heard a couple of things that actually kind of disturbed me at this meeting. I did it so they're gonna do it. I don't know what kind of mentality that is that we have when it comes to protecting our youth. I've heard that through the schools. I've heard that from parents. Well, I did it, so I'm not gonna punish my kid. I did it, so I know they're gonna do it. Are we talking about guardrails or ambulances, right? A guardrail on the cliff or an ambulance in the valley? Yes, we have liquor stores. Yes, we sell tobacco. Yes, we sell alcohol. Those things are here. We're not gonna remove them. But we have an opportunity right now to allow another entity to come into our community that poses another threat to our young people. 22%, that's one in five students smoking marijuana in our schools. With all the information that Amy presented to us earlier, one in five, we had a graduating class of like 60 kids. One in five of those kids. All the way down to the ages of 12, 12 years old, right? We can't prevent everything. That's to your point. That's what I hope you were trying to say was I did it, you know, they're gonna do it too. But I, I question that mentality. And I'll end my comment and allow you to respond.
I have no response to it. It's just, I don't, I don't want kids to use it, but I'm dealing a bit in reality that they do do it. I'd like to see social economic, economical programs that would deter that, that use, right? Just so you, we, so you understand where I'm at on it. Not, not for a minute am I okay with it, but it goes into a lot of other facets that it's just media has portrayed as being safe, like energy drinks. And I deal with this in my own family. I have nieces that just, I'm just, would you stop drinking this stuff? Because if you do the research on it, it's, it's harming them, right? But again, we're dealing with children that are reaching out to be their own adults but aren't able to make those adult decisions to be able to do this stuff, but they do it. I mean, I'm just dealing in reality. I'm not saying that it's right. I'm not saying that at all. And I'm just dealing as, as a reality point, they do it. They use it. Does that mean that we should curb it for adults to be able to make those choices and decisions for themselves? You know, you say there's nothing that we could do about things that are going on in this county. We do have the ability, if we want to do this commission, we could make Landor County a dry county. We could do that. Now, where would we be there? What would be the, the consensus throughout our community, right? We're, that's a staple in, you know, backyard, backyard barbecues and parties. It's people, they like to drink and socialize and, you know? Again, I have my opinion and it's only my opinion. And you have your opinion. And I'm not saying I disagree with your opinion. I'm just saying that we have to look at it in the terms of reality, right? And it's just, yeah, so it just, I, I, I'm, I'm not for, I'm not saying that I'm a component of kids using it and they're just gonna use it and it's just, we might as well give up. That's not what I'm saying.
I have something to say. I would like to know what the Landor County School District does for mental health with our students. Because, and I'll ask, this is a longer thing and then you can go back swing around. And I'm not criticizing.
I'm not.
I know, just let me finish what I have to say.
Oh, I have to say, I can't speak for the Landor County School District.
I'm saying this in general. I have a bigger statement. I'm just, because you're sitting there, not focusing at you, okay? So I'm doing a little bit of research on this for the mental illness help. Because the biggest thing, whether it be drugs, alcohol, sugar, any of that stuff, when you, if you want to put it to nuts to bolts, is, is mental illness and the lack of. 30 years of working at the sheriff's office, the domestic violence, the starving, the beating of the kids, DCFs does nothing. So these kids growing up through, coming through, and it's not just here, but I was pervy of it, working for years and years and years as an advocate to try to get help, help in here for the kids in this school. The school district, this has nothing to do with you, turned down a $2 million grant to put mental illness counselors in the school to start helping them.
Our school district is the star of the state when it comes to the mental health stuff at this point in time.
Two million, let me finish, okay? There's no star of the state. The state of Nevada is the lowest in the nation that pays any money to do anything for mental health all across the board, whether it be adults or children. Nation, we're the bottom. Vermont actually is the top. We do, as far as federal funds, there's so much federal funds out there to help mental illness, which would bring down, down domestic violence, which the children see in the house, which actually watching domestic violence creates more domestic violence. The starving of the kids, the absolute horrific things that go on in the family. If you want to know what causes kids or adults, why they are, they're what they are, it starts at the house, has nothing to do with the drugs, has to do with beating and the lack of mental illness for people in general. And as the ages go by, things get more, it's okay to beat, beat kids because Division Child and Family Services isn't gonna do anything about it. Or to starve them, or to leave them in horrific conditions that are so appalling, which has happened in this county, cases that have been adjudicated. And these kids, as you grow up, you watch them and they either, no, no, it's not. Because mental illness is a big reason why things get started, that people utilize things. Now, that's what I'm saying, if we want to help our kids, because I don't want kids utilizing it either. However, if we really want to get in and help these, help kids, then we need to also invest into mental illness as well. Because the struggles that they go through and they have nowhere to turn. And that's, if we're gonna invest, then we need, and it absolutely off, not off topic, because that's where things start, is from things going.
Thank you, Kathy. Andrew? Andrew, Andrew, okay.
Just, I'm gonna bring it, I'm gonna bring it back for you.
Yes.
I'm concerned about the other public hearings. And I don't know how much longer we're gonna keep going on this. We could interrupt, it's up to you, Mr. Chairman. It's just a suggestion. My staff gave it to me and I think they're correct. You could interrupt, open up one of the other public hearings or a couple of them, get rid of those. As you saw, they went pretty quick before. Um, but up to you how you want to schedule it, but that's a suggestion I have.
Yeah, I just think we're in the, as long as I'm okay with the statement that I made in the opening that this could happen. Um, I think we're in this, we're passionate about it. We need to, I think we just need to conclude. We just need to finish with this and then we'll move into the next. So that's what, that's where I'm gonna proceed with it. So, yes.
I just wanted to say there's no, there's no causation, but I agree with Kathy. There is, but there is a correlation between youth, use of marijuana, and increased mental health problems.
I, I, I don't, I don't disagree with that.
Yeah.
I don't dis, absolutely.
Andrew, did you have?
No.
Okay. Is there any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Well, my Andrew, for the record, um, I'll try to keep this pretty quick. Not gonna lie, when you said a dry county, I kind of smiled a little bit. As I don't drink, smoke, you know, so this, this product that's, that's talking about coming in, I don't have any invested interest in it, other than I like to see uh good people coming into our county and, and trying to make some, some, some business here because uh and how lucky are we that we got a, a, a good bunch of reputable people coming in and trying that. Um, what I'm not for is uh something coming in and it's gonna restrict the rights of other people. Um, other citizens, um, if we do bring in a dispensary, of course, um, that's gonna completely take away the ability for people to grow in their, uh, the privacy of their own properties. So um, as much as I would like to see something coming in that might boost the economy, I don't know. I haven't seen a proposed location. I do like the discussion going on a ballot, no disrespect to the commissioners. I think you guys do a fantastic job. But I think uh something like this going in indefinitely um, for the, for the future is some that the, the voters should at least have a choice in, especially if their rights and privileges are affected, so.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Uh, we have some other public comment? Yes, ma'am.
Shirley Shepherd for the record. Um, we, you discussed all of this stuff on the dispensary part, but that's not where this ordinance is ending. It's, we already have cultivation facilities. So what is it, what does this independent testing laboratories, production facilities, what, what do they entail? I, what comes after this dispensary?
Right. I, I'm not, I mean, basically what we're doing, this is my understanding of it, Shirley, is we're opening up an industry. So it's like, if we have cultivation, why would we limit the other? Because it basically stifles the cultivation because of cost. Now, somebody that's in the business might be able to answer that question more appropriately.
Well, I, I just think before we, before, for my information, before we go any farther on this, I, I want to know the rest of the story. Are you gonna help me now?
I was kind of waiting till all the dissenters finish.
I, I mean, I, I don't, I don't want it to, I mean, I want to know about that before it goes on the ballot.
You want to see what the full picture looks like?
Yes, because, because that's gonna be included in this ordinance if it passes.
Okay, understood. And we'll get that question addressed.
Okay, and, and like another, another issue, you, you were talking about putting things on the ballot and you just can't put everything on the ballot, but and I, I know like you put the night hunting on the ballot. So I mean, to me, this is way more important than that.
Right.
Right?
Yeah, you're right. Thank you. Any other of the comment? Hey, Joe.
Gosh, Amy, I want to keep this short, huh? Chair, commissioners, um, I will try to keep this short. I'm actually, but I, I think it's only fair if you'll allow me to address each of the three people who have spoken primarily so far. Shirley, to answer your question, when some of this stuff poses, so with the scope of everything that's being proposed here, a testing facility is probably about size that table sitting in the corner there with the chair up to it. Somebody could put it in a closet somewhere, allow them to test the product for contaminants like bug spray, like mold, which is very, very, very common in these plants. A lot of them have bug spray on them as well because they get mites and stuff and people always spraying them. And so it just allows you to test and do that. It's a simple, small. If it's an independent business, so hopefully some other citizen here would come forward and want to open up a testing. Right now, how it works, uh, when we grow product out there, it has to be transported all the way to Reno, Nevada, or Las Vegas. It has to be tested, and it has to be transported all the way back and approved or denied. If it, if it is denied, you get a chance to remediate it. You can run it through like a microwave type system if it's mold, kill it. And you can retest it again, drive all the way back to Reno to drive it. So that's the testing part. It's small, it's simple, it would open up to any business owner. The second thing to that is transport. You heard me say transport to, to Reno or to Vegas. We, although we can have thousands of plants out there, we're not allowed to move them. We can't transport it. So we can't drive our own product to Reno. Now, U6 is the closest to have it tested. So we have to hire somebody from Reno to drive out to Landor County, pick up product, to drive it back to Reno, give it to somebody separate to test it. That would be another business opportunity for Landor County residents. Hopefully somebody to stand up and want to get their vehicle certified, want to get themselves a background check, and want to be able to run the product back and forth. That's all. So that's two of the businesses that have been proposed, the testing and the transportation. That'd be two other aspects to what that, listen before you say it. Did that answer that? Okay, now the second uh thing uh that's come up, and I think it's more of a global topic that's worth addressing, is this whole scheduling. I think uh some of the stuff that's been said has been very true and some of it's been very far from the truth. Andrew said something about marijuana posing a, a threat. What poses a threat is untested marijuana, which is what you have in this community right now. Untested marijuana has not only the contaminants in it that you see regularly. In, in Colorado, about 30% of the stuff tested fails by people who are expert growers in this industry. About a third fails because it gets mold very easily. And you get that stuff, and marijuana is treated like a food product. They don't let you just take your milk from your cow and go put it in the store here and sell it. Well, maybe they do, but they don't. And they shouldn't. That's the same with marijuana. It's, it's tested for safety at a very high standard. What you have here now is you don't have that. And you would have that with this industry. So the poses a threat thing is a, is about as far from the truth as you can get. Here's what supports that from our government perspective. Marijuana is a Schedule 1. Let me give you an example of some things that fall under Schedule 1 right now. Schedule 1 drugs right now are heroin and LSD. That's where it is currently. Cocaine is a Schedule 2. That means that right now, the government's got it where marijuana is more dangerous than cocaine. Okay, it's the equal to heroin. Now, who here with any common sense? It, it just doesn't exist. Now, fortunately, it's been proposed to be changed. It's already got a government recommendation, has to go through two bodies of the government to get approved. It's been approved by one to go to the other for final approval, to go from a Schedule 1 to a Schedule 3. Now, what falls under Schedule 3? Tylenol with codeine. Testosterone. Okay, there's, there's two Schedule 3 drugs for you. So our government right now has said marijuana should be with testosterone and Tylenol with codeine. That's where it's going. It's not going that it's so much more deadly that they're posing a threat from Schedule 3 to Schedule 1. No, they want to move from Schedule 1 to Schedule 3. Now, the question was asked earlier, what would that do? This is covering some of the general topics here. What would it do moving to Schedule 1 to Schedule 3? Your own district attorneys were wrong on this. Both of them got opinions, they, wow, we don't really see kind of change it would make. Are you kidding me? Are you kidding me? Banking opens up. You can actually have a bank account. The guys who are growing this stuff and selling it here, it's all cash business. You can have a bank account called marijuana account, right? Just direct the police right through you. It goes, you can have banking. That's a huge change. Uh, it goes from a felony to a misdemeanor. It goes from being looked at like heroin to being looked at like testosterone. That's a huge change, Schedule 1 to Schedule 3. It's no longer taxed in a punitive way. 2ADE is a provision that's set up by our federal government that when they catch cocaine dealers, what they do is when they catch them and they find the million dollars in their house, they tax the million dollars. They seize it and they tax it, so they can tax it because it was illegally produced and sold. That goes away. So now, right now marijuana facilities are taxed under 2ADE. It's this 30% tax provision that penalizes business owners in marijuana who want to do it correctly because it says, well, you're kind of selling some heroin. That goes away. That's a huge change. Federally, it's minimally regulated. If it goes from Schedule 1 to Schedule 3, it starts getting treated like your testosterone, like your Tylenols with codeine. So there are many big changes. They're coming down. They've already been approved by one division of our government and they are by all means going to be approved by other divisions of our government nationwide. Now, I think that, yeah, let's see where I want to start here. Andrew and Amy both said something. First of all, I would say this, Amy, you pointed out how many kids you saw in these schools here, your school right here, with these marijuana problems. Did you ever give that talk to the school?
Well, right now, it's a hard subject.
Okay, well, I can tell you this, that talk should be given to the school. That was an excellent talk. That was excellent. It should be given to the school. These kids should be taught that. Well, we're, we're not proposing bringing in a marijuana store to sell the kids. FBI over age 21. So that whole talk was misplaced.
Well, I'm gonna do a challenge.
You addressed, you addressed that, you addressed that all about the kids. And I think you'll find someone here disagrees with you. It's here. It's, and the appearance are talking about 22% of 9th to 12th graders you're using. For a while, I was, I was concerned that you guys are treating that amount like it was in a bubble. Like this place had never seen marijuana. Because Andrew said it was gonna drive up traffic incidents, so you're looking at 5%. Andrew, you said the I-8 corridor goes through here. You got marijuana in every county that way on it? You got marijuana in every, you think that the traffic incidents stop at the county line and start at the county line?
Said in 5% increase in crash rate in all legalized states.
Okay, and, and so you falsely presented here to these people that it's gonna drive up the need for crash related incidents. When you got marijuana, that is the county line you said, that's not fair.
The state was already has increased crash rate by 5%.
The point is, Commissioner, that in Landor County, if your crash rate's up, it's already up. It's at that end and it's at that end, and if you ask both of them, it's right here in your school because 22% of your kids are using it. Using untested, contaminated, adultered marijuana. Buying it for cash that can go in somebody's back pocket. That's what's happening. Now, that's the truth. So this is a misplaced argument. We direct, I'll come here and speak for the kids. Don't, don't, don't.
Guys, if we have comments, let's just wait and then we can, I know, I, I understand.
When we start talking about neuroplasticity, when, when we're gonna talk about that, I think some of the commissioners are brought up. Well, let's talk about energy drinks. Let's talk about social media, number one effect of neuroplasticity. We talked about not all change being good change. That was one of the things that was brought up. Well, you guys have heard all this crap. Cows let out. Cows let out more methane than anything that is out there. Now they're trying to ban cattle. Is that a good change? Come on. The recent thing I just heard, concrete puts out more gases, second only to the cows. Concrete that gets heat on. They're going to ban concrete next in the world here? You're right, not all change is good change. And to categorize this as being in that, that category is completely unfair, and it's, and it's misplaced. Now, here's what it will do. Could you mind, um, just putting up a couple of slides? Go to the next slide there, that'd be great. So, this is from Health and Human Services. You get these public transcripts, they're, they're right here. I pulled out the, um, the abstract aspects, because they give you the short, down, and dirty of the research that's now been able to be done. What happens is marijuana wasn't able to be studied because it was illegal. And then, and they're right, all the data on this is in the last ten to twenty years, for the most part. If you look at this, again, published in the Journal of Health, Health and Public Safety, Health and Human Services, uh, article here, marijuana laws reduce filled opioids, and they reduce population overwired death of opioids. That's what the studies are finding. They're finding that, if you look at the second sensor that's highlighted, the key feature of a medical, of a medical marijuana law that facilitates a reduction in overdose death rates is a relatively liberal allowance of dispensaries. The allowing dispensaries is what is decreasing the death rate. So when we're talking about safety, let's talk about that. The, in, in areas, it goes on to say, in areas that are more stringent in the regulation of dispensaries, the protective effect falls. If you're strict on dispensaries, like they're proposing you do for Lander County, the protective effect falls. Broader access to medical marijuana facilities, um, is a powerful way to go against opiates. Now, why did I put this in here? You guys paid for a study, I believe, in this county that's on your public website. It says that sixty percent of your population is concerned about opiates. That you guys had deaths in this community based on opiates. And here's research that says, "Look, this will help that." So this isn't all about adverse safety. If you go to the next slide, please. The mortality, here's another study. This one's in the Journal of the American Medical Association, one of the more prominent journals in all of medicine. States with medical cannabis laws have a twenty-four point eight percent lower opioid overdose, overdose mortality. Twenty-five percent decrease. And guess what they say in the last sentence? That effect gets better with time. The longer that the place has a dispensary, the lower those overdose deaths go. There's a safety thing that nobody talked about today. Go to the next slide. What's marijuana? This, this comes from, I don't have the site on this one, so let me give it to you. This one comes from, actually, I'm not with you. This, this comes from a site that they, they took everything they found marijuana waste with, and they put it up, they, they published it on this site, I think it was a, a public health safety site. I mean, we all know about the fentanyl stuff, but, I mean, look at some of the other stuff. Heroin, embalming fluid they found in it. They found laundry detergent in it, help with the smell of it. Uh, they did that for the, if you read further, an article talks about how, how it helps the, the nose part of it. LSD, methamphetamine, ketamine, cocaine, they found marijuana waste with everything. Why would you want marijuana in your community with all these kids? With twenty-two percent of these kids with this potential? If you say, Amy, it comes from the dispensaries, good. Good. That twenty-two percent of those kids aren't going to have that in it. Good. Okay, yeah, but, but we'll actually talk about potency too. I'm glad you brought that up. Because, we're actually just talking about potency now. Do you guys think that hash and dab and, uh, all the extraction marijuana, you think it just came about? No. Been there forever. People have been, been boiling down marijuana, pulling the oils out of it since the beginning of time. That's where we got it from. That's where the industry got it from, from people doing it. The guys that can grow it at home, ask anyone of them if they can make themselves a little hash oil out of it. Ask any of them if they can break out the terpenes. They all can do it. Just that they can do it without regulation. So when you talk about potency, it's a misguided statement to say there's a lot of potent stuff these guys can grow at home. In fact, the guys that grow at home, as has been said by another person here, they're going to keep growing at home. You know why? They're damn good at it. They're damn good at it. Now, we're going to address that too. Um, so it gets laced, this is a safety issue. Next slide, I, I only have six slides, by the way. There's this gateway, I knew this would come up. This came up before, I think Shirley brought this up a couple, a couple trips back here ago, about gateway. I don't want to be a ticket to a gateway substance. Now, I don't want to talk about kids. We're talking about an age twenty-one and above store. We're not here to, to, to sell this to kids. But if it gets into the hands of kids, not only is it going to be safer, but is it, the question ringing in my mind, is it going to though cause those kids to use other drugs? This is a gateway, because what does gateway really mean? Gateway means if you start something, you escalate, and you'll use more and more. That was opening of the gate. Well, if you look at studies on gateway stuff, it's a misfounded, old-guided principle that they can't really determine, because here's why. Everybody who used marijuana who reported it, reported using tobacco, for the most part. Was tobacco their gateway? Everybody who reported using marijuana, reported alcohol. Was alcohol their gateway? So we can't start the gateway discussion at marijuana. Go in the schools and get talks about tobacco and about alcohol, and use the word gateway. That's what you do. The other thing is, is that in the studies, so this is another JAMA article. They did, by the way, mention the opioid things. I don't want to get too overboard on this, but I actually found some even better in this article than before. I told you guys when they legalized marijuana, the number, that the pharmacies hate it, pharmaceutical companies that are manufacturing drugs hate it. Because then the first year, a decreased marijuana, or a decreased opiate prescription pill, you seventy-two thousand pills a day less were used. That's hurting your Pfizer's, that's hurting your Johnson and Johnson's. They hate that stuff. Well, look what I found here, this is in JAMA. These two doctors, opioids decreased two point one million daily doses. Decreased two point one million daily doses when states instituted medical cannabis laws. Two point one million doses? Now, I want somebody to get up here, when you guys go to rebut what I'm saying, and you tell me that opiates are better than marijuana. No freaking way. No way. It's not even a discussion. Two point one million daily doses. Is that an effect even helping the rights it is? It says, "There have been worries the marijuana might be a gateway." But the study doesn't support that view. Journal of the American Medical Association, most recent research, the study doesn't support that view. You know, it says that an important piece of science in the area of law, laws are often passed, this goes to your whole put on the ballot deal. Laws are often passed based on emotion and not medical research. That's published in the medical journal. They're passed on emotion and not research. Don't let your opinion of this be based on your emotion. Remember, I'm not a marijuana user either. I'm a medical doctor. But I have seen firsthand, so I'm an advocate. I've seen firsthand on the advocate. I want to talk to you. I want to talk with you on that very study you did about neuroplasticity. Because you're right. Kids shouldn't be doing this. And that's not what this is about, at all. So, I think that's the last slide. Oh. And here's one last thing about gateway stuff, for those of you still into gateway. Marijuana is everywhere now, right? It's legal in all these states, right? Why is opiate use going down? Why is there two point one million less pills? The gateway should be going up, right? It should be opening the door to all these people who did marijuana that started using more pills. It's going down. You see, people use this gateway stuff loosely, but the research doesn't support it. Just like they found in the Journal of the American Medical Association. Why aren't tobacco and alcohol considered that? You know, people do leave out, you guys did get into this stuff about mental health, socioeconomic status, genetics. There's some things for you, considering the type of marijuana use, we talked about, want to talk about drug abuse in general. Where's that coming in this conversation? It's not a store in your area that's properly testing, properly transporting, properly selling, and then a judicial department, your sheriff's office, properly prosecuting with your DAs. Everybody else wants to put drug spray on their stuff, wants to sell moldy stuff, bust their asses. And I'm glad to hear, because I actually did feel bad that the people want to grow their own camp, but you're telling me and stating about their camp. I don't know that to be true or not, but I believe you. So, that's all the better. We don't even restrict them. That's the last I have to say.
All right, well, I'm going to go ahead then with, um,
Let me, let me, real quick here, let me just, yes. I'm going to take a couple more public comments, then we're going to wrap it up. We got to get everything out of the public. Yes, no, absolutely. Yeah, I'm not taking that away from you.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to sit up here with you.
So, uh, yeah, that'd be a lot of fun to have a great debate with, uh, the doctor and the attorney. And like, all good attorneys, he takes things and twists them around a little bit. So, um, I'm a gestalt thinker. I understand there are going to be unintended consequences around something that seems like a really good idea. I am not against a dispensary. I'm against a dispensary in the traditional way a dispensary is run in most communities. It looks awful. It changes the perception. So when Andrew said, "There's a threat," and then Joey implies that a local grower is a greater threat, the concentration levels in the dispensaries are a higher concentration than a local grower, for the most part. I'm not saying there's not possibilities. The availability goes up. We already have local growers in this community. You put a dispensary in the community, and the availability to youth and adults and everybody in between goes up. The perception of harm is decreased. Kids see Lander County put a dispensary in, the perception of harm is going to go lower than it already is. And the kids right now think it's healthy. They think it's like a salad. They've said it. We will educate them, but there's still the point. Dispensaries have these higher concentrations. The fact that it's approved by the government actually makes me less desirable, because our government, as most of you know, is not looking out for our best interests. Anybody who wants to have a debate about that, I'd love to meet on that too. A controlled medical facility solves the problem. It's a win-win. It's a workable way to still have people get access to healthy, tested facilities. I'm not against having the independent testing lab and the growing and all of that out there. It's the dispensary piece. It's one piece of this whole proposal, this whole code. If we can eliminate that one piece of having a local dispensary, the rest of it serves a purpose. And the way we can make the dispensaries, make it a controlled medical facility where people can come in and get what they need. So, the final thing is the protective elements of opiate addiction. Yes, we're all concerned with opiates, but they are such a small percentage of the use in this community compared to marijuana, that it doesn't even compare. The marijuana is leading to mental health issues, compounding problems. I could go on and on. So it isn't a gateway. In my opinion, marijuana isn't a gateway, because it's just a final use. Once these kids and these adults get access to these concentrated gummies and, and, uh, wax and all this other stuff, they don't need to go on to another drug. They're getting a really strong high, it's affecting their mental health, it's affecting their ability to function in society. For the most part, they become, they don't need any more drugs. So, so it's not really a solution like, oh, everyone who does marijuana now becomes healthy and stays away from opiates. It just creates another problem. It's another addiction. So, but otherwise, we'd be fine with that policy.
Thank, thank you, Amy.
Correction, the move, you asked about the move from Schedule One to the Schedule Three, the proposed, and the effects it would have on local and state government. I reiterate, it would not affect us, from what I can tell. What, uh, my colleague was, is talking about is it does affect the federal government itself, but those, those penalties, that's under federal law. I am prohibited, the way our state law was passed, I am prohibited from prosecuting you for marijuana. It's still illegal. The statute is still there. I, I've got that as part of my argument in the case I was talking about. Um, because it is still illegal to possess marijuana under state law. All they did is they said, prosecutor, if it's below a certain amount, you can't prosecute it. Okay? So, my hands are tied. As far as I know, I can't, I think they settled that in the Arizona case. I can't prosecute federal law anyway. As you may know, with illegal immigration, they've prosecuted, they tried prosecuting in Arizona the federal law under their state, with their state officers. I think Dora Pyle was involved in that. And the US Supreme Court said, "No, you can't do that unless the federal government allows you to." Well, even if the federal government allowed me to, I don't think the way our statute reads, I'm allowed to. It's a, it says that I will not be allowed to prosecute it. I think that probably covers me across the board.
Bill, I think we get the point. I appreciate, I do, I just want to, I just, I want to get this on here, so.
Saying there's no effect. There's no effect to us.
The point's been made, thank you. So I'm going to open it up for a motion.
I just have one.
Yes.
I just, shares to realize that your, the ordinance is asking for you to put a dispensary, and as Mr. Ramos has described, all of the things that a dispensary would need. All of the public comments, been a little bit of a red herring, all of the issues. We don't know if a dispensary is going to bring that, but no one has come here. I've seen more people in these meetings on an easement issue, asking and having public comment and having opinion. I think if this, if this community wanted to have an opinion, they would be here. They know it's happening. And I think the commissioners can make a decision, that's what you're here for, instead of putting it on the ballot, further delaying it, and everything else. There's been nothing presented that has shown what the effects would be. There's been things about children and everything else. So, I just wanted to reiterate that, make sure that we're focusing on the ordinance as it is in front of you, instead of kind of everything that's been presented. And mention that, like Brian, what you said, if you don't want a dispensary here in the future, you can put it right back in front of the commission and say, "Here have been the effects," and you can shut it right down.
Thank you. So I'm going to open it up for a motion.
So, in making the motion, do I read this whole, the whole thing that's in front of me, or how do I? It's all about the red and blue marks, or how do I do that?
Oh, yeah, because we have the motion.
Yeah, um, how do I even go about making a motion?
You can make a motion to approve the, that is, to propose the ordinance, oh, no, approve, because this is the second.
Second, approve.
Um, approve the ordinance as, uh, presented at the beginning of the, uh, meeting.
Okay. So I'll make the motion that we, um, accept the ordinance as it, um, presented at the beginning, the first reading, I guess, if I'm saying that right.
I will second the motion. I will call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay. Mike talked about, uh, setting it up so that it didn't go into effect until January one, twenty twenty-five.
Yes, with that, I agree. You know, because that was,
Can I amend it? Make an amendment, thank you for saying that. That it doesn't go into effect till, um, January of twenty-five.
Twenty-five, okay. I will second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? All opposed, say nay. Because we have to, nay. I need to hear yays or nays. There was a motion, there was a second. By show of hand, who agrees with the motion and the second? Okay? Whoever's against it, please raise your hand.
I'm not against it, I just want it to go to vote.
Can I make a second motion?
Yeah, so.
And I think that's the way these guys feel too. They would like to see it go to votes. And.
So Bill, we cannot take this motion, put it with the July, or the January first date, so everything could start rolling out with the result of the election.
Yeah, can we do that?
You can't put it on the ballot at this meeting, because that's not an agenda item, okay?
We only have till tomorrow, so we're screwed.
No, no, that is for, that's specifically for the chairman. But you would have to have it, I think, on the next, you correct me, Ms. Clerk, you're the elections expert. I think they can still get it on if, at the next meeting, they had such a thing. You've got enough time.
We would have to have it by July fifteenth to get it as a ballot question.
So we'd have to come up with the question, the pros, the cons, all by July fifteen?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I think the pros and cons are already kind of around.
But it's presenting it to the public in a way that's fairly based. That's my concern.
Would there be much difference, Bill, from what was presented last time? It would just be some wording changes, correct? Because a lot of the pros and cons, or no?
What was presented last time was not what you guys were asking.
Right, exactly. It was a state question. It wasn't a county question.
That was a state, yes. I was.
Yeah, that was pure legalization. Everything has changed.
So would this be presentation from your department? This would be?
We, we would probably have to, we would have to write something up, but I'm, I, I don't think it's insurmountable. It'd be a lot of work. I don't wanna sit here and say, oh, yeah, no big deal. It's a, it's a big deal, but we can get it done.
Because our first meeting is, so this, so, when's our second meeting in July?
Our next meeting that we have is July eleventh, and that was in Austin.
That's when we'd have to do it.
Yeah, and you'd have to have it by then.
Right.
Well, no, it's, we could do it, the, the point is, it has to be done by July fifteenth. We could call a special meeting, that buys four days. Because otherwise, it would be, it'd have to be at the Austin meeting, which is the eleventh of July. So uh, we could call a special meeting four days later to get that approved, correct?
Why can't you put it on the agenda at the Austin meeting?
No, we can. We're just looking at length of time because it's very limited, right?
What about a special meeting to direct? Do we have to call a special meeting to direct them to draw it up, so we could have it?
No, I mean, we could give you directions to draw it all up and present it, and we could present it at our Austin meeting, correct? Well, it's, it's a, it's a huge undertaking, so it's just, because if we don't do it, then it's gonna be delayed a, 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 a year?
Yeah, two years.
Two years, yeah, two years, sorry. Yeah.
All right, so, one more thing. Bill, if this, if we went with this resolution, and know that we're gonna proceed with this, if the deadlock, if, if the deadline's met, then it would be an agenda item to rescind this if the voters, i- if, if it was a, a huge amount against, but then it allows it to proceed. Is that a possibility or no?
Yes, it's a possibility. We try and get some from the gathering for the eleven. Your biggest problem is gonna be, it'll be pretty much, I mean, not legally, but as a practical matter, pretty, gonna be pretty much take it or leave it at that meeting. I mean, you can do some quick amendments on the fly, but if you want anything substantial from whatever I come up with, um, or someone else comes up with, it doesn't have to be me. You know, I, I'm gonna tell you that I will try my best to come up with something, and I think if nothing else, you can come up with just a, a simple advisory question. Um, should we allow dispensaries in recreational use sales in Lander County? Something along those lines. That would be relatively easy, I think, to come up with versus being specific like this ordinance is.
I don't think that's what he was asking, but I do understand what you're saying. We can actually take the language that was put on the ballot last time, and we can get it to work to what it is. So we can actually pull language and have it available for the July eleventh meeting. I think what you were asking is if you report and approve this today, have it and put it on the ballot, which would go on the ballot on November, and you approve it to be available in January, would that give us substantial time to come back and re-pull it back and not approve it, depending on how the vote goes?
Yes, that's a vote.
Yes, we can do that.
We can do that?
No, no, you can't.
Why can't you?
Because. Jerry, please come to the front, please. Just, just so we have you on record.
I'm sorry. Take more time, Jerry, answer the record. Because Mike's question is, is can it be, the way I understand it, your question, Mike, is uh, can, can it be rescinded uh, at some time between now?
After the November election.
No, not for two years.
No, 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 no.
How can we do an advisory?
Uh, he's confused. I, I know where Jerry's coming from. No, Jerry, um, if they pass the ordinance, the ordinance can go into effect, like you say, January first. It can then be pulled back, but it would require a repeal ordinance. It would, it would have to be a, a full repeal, so it would take two more meetings for them to repeal it. If um, you had a ballot measure that was simply advisory, which would be the easiest way to do it at this point, is a simple advisory without, although, I don't know if, I think even with an advisory, yeah, the AG's opinion is likely to be that, and the courts are likely to say that you're still bound by it. But if it's voted on, it's gonna be over. Um, the only way you'll be able to change it is with another vote, usually. I'm not gonna say that categorically, but usually.
I, I wanna remind uh, you all that uh, we had another uh, um, uh, issue that was of, of public interest, and that was to have a county bank. And this board stated that we would have a, we, we've had a really good debate here. Not many people from the county to hear it. But this board uh, suggested that we have an evening uh, meeting so that, and it was specifically stated so that more people from the county could be there to listen to the debate. So, uh, I think if you, uh, I think if you.
That would all be nice, but in terms of having this deadline, um, we really can't be doing that before then. You could still have all kinds of meetings after, once it's scheduled.
Yeah, you've, you've had good debate. Your, your debaters are, are, your debaters are, are prepared. Um, they, I bet you they could do it next week. Before your July eleventh meeting. Sorry to take that.
So we can't post things by next.
So just so it's very clear for the record, we had a motion and a second. I need everybody to say yea or nay for the record, not just sign of hand. It needs to be stated, so. Kathy made the motion, I made the second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? All opposed, say nay.
Aye.
Your aye? Okay, so we have three ayes and two nays. So it passes.
With the, with the caveat that we put this on the ballot as an advisory.
Yeah, it doesn't do anything till January first, so we have time to.
And I would like to see this put on the ballot as an advisory, even though it passed.
Kate, can you bring that during correspondence?
Yeah.
During correspondence.
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Okay, we're gonna move on to the next public hearing, and I apologize for those that have been waiting for it. Uh, we're gonna go to one point five for a public hearing. Review, consideration, and possible action on zone change application number twenty-four dash zero 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 nine filed by Double K Land Company LLC to change the zoning on APN zero one one dash zero.
Kirk Johnson, Nevada Johnson?
Oh, sorry, Kirk, I gotta finish reading the record. I'm just waiting.
Sure, okay. Sorry about that.
Yeah, you're okay. So I'll go ahead and continue on. To change the zoning on APN zero one one dash zero two zero dash two one from A two, five acre agricultural to C one commercial and C two general commercial and APN zero one one zero two zero dash two three from A two, five acre, five acre agricultural to C one uh, commercial to allow for future development. The subject properties are north and south of Yellow Brick Road, west of the intersection of Yellow Brick Road and Round Mountain Drive, Battle Mountain, Nevada. This was considered on, at the May fifteenth, twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting and forwarded a recommendation of approval with the following conditions. One, an amendment be made to the Lander County Master Plan uh, land use map to reflect the changes approved with this application. And two, screen wall will be required between commercial uses and residential or agricultural uses. Screen wall is required to be reviewed and approved by the Lander County Planning Commission. Yes, sir.
Kirk Johnson, Nevada Johnson, Double K. We're here today asking for approval.
Okay. So, uh, does the commission have any questions on this? Um, so, just to make sure I understand here, let me see.
I know that this was a really hot issue with the planning commission, and it's been before the planning commission like three times or four times. Yes, a really hot issue. And, why, no, I think, three, but, two, okay. Anyway, um, originally, they started out, they were gonna try to do all of the acreage, and they agreed to pull it back to do just the smaller portions that they're doing now. And one of Phil, Marvel's biggest concerns was the problem that they were having with the residents coming over there and messing on their haystacks and, and messing with their livestock and stuff, which is why the fences were asked to be put in there to help block that, to keep, put a green zone in there and the fences to kind of help differentiate the areas. And I see that you followed through with that agreement, so.
Okay, thank you for that, Dee. Any other commissioners that have any questions? Um, so I, I have one question, and that's for somebody that was in the planning commission, maybe for uh, Aaron or. So basically, does this, does this um, zone change, does it meet our current master plan, Lander County master plan? Can anybody answer that question? Shelby?
Um, so our current master plan calls this area out as a medium density residential.
Okay.
Uh, so it doesn't meet our current master plan. Um, but to speak to the master plan, it is a living document.
Right.
Um, and it can be changed four times a year per, per NRS. Uh, we do have utilities in this location, water and sewer. Um, to put commercial there would ultimately make sense to support that.
So where, where I'm going with it is that, on a, on another item we'll be addressing, uh, the planning commission denied it for that fact alone, that it didn't meet uh, local, the, the Lander County master plan. So I'm just a bit confused and wanting some insight why they would have approved it, this one, but not the other one. So can, somebody shed some light on that, that was actually at the planning commission meeting? Can you answer that question, Kim?
Can, can I just make a point of note?
Well, no, I want my question answered first, so.
Yes, this would probably address that. You actually have an ordinance on your books, the Lander County ordinance, that says, in the event that you do approve something that deviates from the master plan that's currently adopted, the master plan, plan is automatically updated by virtue of your vote. It's on your vote, sorry.
No, I, I, I understand that, but my, my thought process was, because this is the thing, is the planning commission, I hold them in high regard. They, they have a tough job. They, they look at all these ordinances, issues, right? Yes, we have the final say, but my question is, why did they deny one? That's, that, we'll, we'll be coming up to, but yet they approved this one on the same issues. They denied one and they approved one. Why is that?
As long as you can speak to it with it being on a separate agenda item that hasn't been opened, Kirk can actually address that.
Bill, are we okay? I'm not, I'm not siding, and I'm just, that's, this is my concern on this item, is why we approved this, but yet the planning commission wasn't consistent.
I think I can answer that for you.
Okay, thank you.
Um, so the reason that the planning commission, and they stated this in their motion, the reason that they denied the other one was because they couldn't come to a consensus and they wanted the commissioners to make a decision.
Okay, fair enough. Honest answer, okay.
Being at the meeting was that simply what was going on is they had already said no, they looked at it, and they thought it was your baby. They, I think they're punting deliberately, but that's my impression.
Okay, thank you, Bill. Um, okay, so. I know we have a map here. All the commissioners have seen, they've seen the map in the area that's proposed, okay? All right, so is there any other um, commissioners' questions or comments on it? Yeah, now I'm gonna open it up to public comment. Aaron?
Sorry, I share some information, Aaron McKenna, through the record. Uh, there's some infrastructure investment that's extended utilities in this area. As Shelby alluded to, the term master plan is being reworked, and those areas are tentatively proposed for a higher or medium density. I think to kind of answer your question, right, a lot of the residents were concerned, kind of like, not in my backyard mentality, they kind of all wanna keep that growth kind of away from them, and I can absolutely understand that. When we looked at kind of the low line fruit of the expansion of Lander County and where we can kind of get some more tax base, you know, we've been really looking at this lately, and, and it all starts with infrastructure. Where's our water? Where's our sewer currently, so that we can leverage those investments? And at, looking at that and the master plan update that's gonna come to you, I'm gonna remind you, so you'll kind of see that these areas are kind of like only low line fruit areas for expansion, and where those existing investments, multi-million dollar investments have to be put, uh, so.
Okay, yeah, okay, thank you. And I, I can see, guys, I, I mean, it's, this is, yes, yeah, sorry, Nalina.
I'm like a talker, I'm a transition. I am one of the residents of all through this area. Um, I think when we had our first meeting at the um, I have a question. A lot of it came down to overwhelmed of the amount of properties that they wanted to do, but since then, you guys have approved an event center. So I mean, that pretty much makes any of that moment void, if you ask me as a resident out there. You're gonna have all these problems anyways, making that event center work. So I don't see, I don't know, arguing with something.
Yeah, no, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not arguing against it. I'm just putting the facts out there, and so we encourage debate on it. I mean, it's, we want growth. No matter, I don't care what community you're in, anytime you have growth, there's gonna be impingements, and it has to start somewhere. So I, I'm, I'm empathetic to the people that it does, it's close to, that have been out there, but in the, in the name of progress and growth, I mean, it's like, I think it, it probably is the right thing to do, so. Um, is there any other public comment before my call for a motion?
So I, but, but just so I understand, because when they um, came before us, before they wanted the, the whole big area done, right, and then they had, we were, they were requested to uh, shrink it down to a smaller area, so I can make sure I'm understanding.
That's, uh, we're talking about this map right here? The one that you're discussing right now is on the next agenda.
Right, it's a different.
Doesn't have to do with, yeah, doesn't have to do with this one.
That's what I'm confused on.
Yeah.
Yeah. So this is the commercial section. I mean, you gotta, this is out in the area where we're, we're, we're putting the, the event center.
Oh, okay, so this is a total sense, okay, yeah, all right.
Okay, so if there's no other questions or comments, I'm gonna call for a, a motion.
A motion to approve the zone change application number twenty-four dash zero zero nine filed by Double K Land Company LLC to change the zoning on APN zero eleven dash twenty dash twenty-one from A two five acre agricultural to C one commercial and C two general commercial and APN zero eleven dash twenty dash twenty-three from A two five acre agricultural to C one commercial to allow for future development with the stipulations from, okay, known import included.
All right, so we have a motion. Is there a second? We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Okay, we'll move to one point five. Review, consideration, and possible action on zone change number twenty-four dash zero zero zero, zero 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 eight filed by Emerald Land Company LLC to change the zoning on APN zero one one dash zero two zero dash two five and a portion of zero one one dash zero two zero dash two seven from A two five acre agricultural district to A one one acre agricultural district to allow for higher density residential development. The subject properties are north and south of Yellow Brick Road, approximately eight hundred seventy-two feet of the intersection of Yellow Brick Road and Twenty-Sixth Street, Battle Mountain, Nevada. This was considered at the May fifteenth, twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting and forwarded a recommendation of denial. Anybody wanna say anything on it?
Yeah, Kirk Johnson, Nevada Johnson, Inc., Emerald Land Company. It, it appeared at the time that the board was kind of undecided. We asked for the denial to get it pushed up to you guys. So that's, that's how we kind of got here. We originally came to the planning and the commissioners, and we were asked to cut our property down from seventy-three acres. We cut it down to twenty-two. So I, I think, we didn't hear any, at least I didn't, I didn't hear any real opposition from the planning at that meeting. There wasn't any real negative comment. They weren't concerned about anything. They just couldn't seem to make a decision.
And this, this is the one that we were discussing, where we're looking at the bigger footprint, and we've condensed it now.
We came to you last time, it was seventy-two acres?
Yes.
It's now twenty-two.
Right, so we're not, we don't have a septic density issue.
Nope.
Okay. So, commission, you have any questions? Okay, honest for public comment? None? All hear a motion?
Motion to approve zone change number twenty-four dash zero zero eight filed by Emerald Land Company LLC to change the zoning on APN zero eleven dash twenty dash twenty-five and a portion of zero eleven dash twen- zero twenty dash twenty-seven from A two five acre agricultural district to A one one acre agricultural district to allow for higher density residential development.
Okay, so we have a motion. Do we have a second? Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye. Aye? Okay, we'll move to one point. Oh, and, sorry, I thought it was, all opposed, say nay? All right, so we're going to go to one point six. Review, consideration, and possible action on parcel map number two four dash zero zero one zero filed by Emerald Land Company LLC to divide eight, to divide APN zero one zero dash zero two zero dash two seven, a seventy point one five acre parcel into three one acre parcels and a sixty-seven point one five acre remainder parcel within a proposed A one one acre agricultural zoning district. The subject property is located north of Yellow Brick Road, approximately eight hundred seventy-two feet of the intersection of Yellow Brick Road and Twenty-Sixth Street, Battle Mountain, Nevada. This was considered at the May seventeenth, twenty twenty four Planning Commission meeting and forwarded a recommendation of denial. So, anybody have anything to say on this one?
Yeah, Kirk Johnson, Nevada Johnson, Emerald Land Company. Uh, the reason why that was denied is because of the A one zoning hadn't been put in place at that time. They weren't allowed to approve if the zoning wasn't correct. Now it is. We have the A one. What we're requesting fits in the zone. Now it is. We have the A one, and what we're requesting fits in the zone.
Commission, you guys have any questions?
Hold on, I'm reading.
Yeah, me too, so.
So maybe just to explain further.
Yes, please.
Uh, this, this map is taking the parcel that we just rezoned in the last agenda item and just creating three one acre lots.
Creating what?
Three one acre lots and then a remainder lot. So, uh, we approved the one acre zoning. Now we're creating the one acre lots that they can build on.
And the reason the planning commission denied it was again, why?
Was because they denied the zone change, so then they can't approve the creation of the one acre lots if the one acre zoning is not in place. That makes sense.
Makes sense. All right, so, uh, no comments or questions from the commission? Does the public have any, uh, concerns with it? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
A motion to approve the parcel map.
One point six.
I was reading that, trying to see how to put it in it. Um, the, that take act, for the action on parcel map twenty-four dash zero zero one zero filed by Emerald Land Company LLC to divide APN zero ten dash twenty dash twenty-seven to a seventy point one five acre parcel into three one acre parcels and a sixty-seven point one five acre remainder parcel with, with a proposed A one one acre agricultural zoning district.
Okay, so we have a motion. Is there a second?
All second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay? The direct, there was one nay. Um, okay, so now we'll move to one point seven. Review consideration of possible action on parcel map number two four dash zero zero two two filed by Gospel Land LLC to split APN zero zero two dash three two zero dash one eight, a five point four six acre parcel into two, uh, twenty-two thousand three hundred seventy-one square foot parcels, a sixty-seven thousand one hundred and fourteen square foot parcel and a two point eight nine acre parcel within an R three single family residential one half acre zoning district. The subject property is located on the north side of Mount Lewis Drive approximately six hundred seventy eight east of the intersection of Mount Lewis Drive and Sheep Creek Road, sixty-five Mount Lewis Drive, Battle Mountain, Nevada, eight nine eight two oh. This was considered at the June twelfth, twenty twenty-four planning commission meeting and forwarded a recommendation of approval with the following conditions. One, parcel map to be reported with the Lander County Recorder's Office within one year of approval by the Lander County Board of Commissioners. Okay?
Uh, so Shelby, not for the record, um, this map is just to create two more buildable lots on Mount Lewis Drive, uh, with two remainder lots for future buildable lots. Uh, the planning commission had no concerns, um, and they just, uh, they recommended approval with the, with the condition that's listed.
Okay, uh, commission have any questions? Hey, is there any public comment on it? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the parcel map. Uh. One point seven, one, all right, yeah, it's one point seven, there you go. One point seven. To split APN zero zero dash three twenty dash eighteen, a five point four six acre parcel into two twenty-two thousand three hundred and seventy-one square foot parcels, a sixty-seven point one one four square foot parcel and two point eight nine acre parcel within R three single family residential one half acre zoning district.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
All second.
Motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say nay?
Okay, we'll move into one point eight. Thank you, Shelby.
Thank you.
Um, for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove the renewal pro, uh, proposal from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool and approval for payment uh, out of fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five funds in the amount of five hundred fifty-six thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-one cents. And thank you very much for your patience. Ellen, it's good to see you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the members of the board. It's always good to come out to, uh, Battle Mountain in, uh, Lander County. I had flashbacks of Churchill County in a brothel discussion. It was and I was looking, is that next somewhere on the agenda? Cause that's a lively discussion as well. Uh, for the record, Alan Call, I'm the Chief Financial Officer of, uh, PoolPact. Um, you know, uh, pleased that, uh, members are the center of everything we do and, and uh, the amount of attention that your leadership team has given to PoolPact is to be commended. Bert and his staff have been very actively involved and, uh, and I believe through that involvement has paid, uh, has paid dividends. Uh, you know, our coverage remains the same. I, you got all the information in your packet. I'm not gonna fly through the PowerPoint. Uh, you know, I just want to go quickly over some key data points. Uh, pool-wide average increase was nine point two. Pool-wide, nine point two, all our members. Uh, Lander County, your increase is four point two six percent, uh, less than half the overall, overall increase. Um, that's in light of the fact that your property values, your TIV values even went up, uh, seven percent. We, uh, do a tremendous job every year going out to bid for the different layers of insurance coverage. Our property was relatively flat. Uh, liability had, had some increases, uh, on the school side and the school was costed out separately. We were able to maintain their liability, uh, rates, uh, the same. So the renewal for, uh, Lander County, again, a four point two six percent increase over the prior year. The insurance market's loosening up a little bit. Uh, it was very difficult over the last several years, uh, but, uh, were able to get some favorable rates coming in this year. Some of the things that we do, you know, is our risk management program is, is, uh, very important, you know, human resources, risk management, the e-learning, health and wellness, cybersecurity, law enforcement training. And the fact that your folks here take advantage of that, uh, you know, uh, your sheriff's office is one of the leaders in our end dog, the Nevada Detention Officers Working Group. Um, as a matter of fact, uh, they held a meeting out here in, uh, in, in Lander County and, uh, they participate in the law enforcement roll call training on a regular basis, you know, to help, you know, one of the best sheriff's offices in great state become even better. Cybersecurity, we have experts. Uh, Tony Ruchy's has been out here, done a passive network assessment at the sheriff's office in February of this, earlier this year. And, uh, you guys participated in the NOV4, which is a phishing campaign. And, uh, your click rate is two point seven percent. Uh, and, uh, I was bragging at a member, uh, last night, happened to be a school district, uh, member and their click rate, and the click rate's bad. So that means you, you opened up a bad email, you know, you had free gift card at Cabela's or, or Shields or Starbucks or whatever. And theirs was under two percent and, uh, one of the trustees quipped, yeah, that's probably about the click rate of opening up my emails by staff. And I thought, I can relate to that. Sometimes I don't think people open my emails. But, uh, you know, you folks are doing a great job out here. Our e-learning platform, uh, you got a seventy-five percent completion rate of those folks who take those classes. You have seventy-two users, the Lan- Lander County Fire Department's using Target Solutions. They have ten users using that. Uh, the EMS, uh, twenty-three users, um, using that education training, uh, format. We provide human resource consultation, onsite, uh, training as well as e-learning associated with that. And again, Lander County taking advantage of, of that information. We do have an in, enterprise excellence program that, uh, again, it's a voluntary program to ensure that we are doing best practices throughout all the different key departments. And upon completion of that, uh, you get a financial incentive to reinvest into risk management programs and services. Um, included in the packet was contact information. Um, you know, Wayne Carlson, our founder, is still our executive director, Stephen Romero, member relations. Uh, I work on the finance side. Marshall and Jared do the risk management. Uh, Mike Van Houten, the e-learning master, uh, has just become, you know, very awesome at what he's doing and, uh, starting to in, integrate AI into some of this training. And then Stacy, Stacy Norbeck is the general manager, uh, for our HR support. Um, some of the things beyond just those things, we've done some financial leadership classes, um, and the county manager has asked if I would be willing to prepare, uh, staff training going over, uh, things in Lander County and I'm working on doing that. And one of the components we're gonna have within that is maybe a one hour overview of local government finance for elected officials for the, for the commissioners so that you get a better understanding of how property tax revenue, those types of things. And, uh, we're looking forward to setting a date for that, probably August or September. But again, just value added services and again, his involvement and the staff involvement and attending things and, uh, Juicy and some of the things she's doing in the treasures office are phenomenal and, uh, we really appreciate, uh, you know, making the best entity even better. And that's what our members are doing, uh, using our services to assist. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have and the real hard questions, your concerns, agents here to answer those.
Commission, any questions?
No.
Does the public have any questions? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve the renewal proposal from Nevada Public Agency Insurance Pool for the approval for the amount out in the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five in the funds amount of five hundred and fifty-six thousand one hundred and forty-six dollars and forty-one cents.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
All right, Ellen, thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys.
And Johnny, thank you.
And while we're getting ready, uh, to Bert, Ron, and all department heads, that's a good report. Just sit up here and listen that the participation is, uh, of, of your staff and, uh, your guys' direction is, 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 is being conducted and util- utilizing the funds that we pay them for the services that are provided. So thank you guys for directing that.
Okay, we'll move into, okay, so, uh, my question is legal, Bill. Since it kind of, we had some overlap in the last, should I just go ahead and open up both items and have discussion or how should we do it?
That would probably be easier, so, yeah.
Um, I, I would ask that we table one nine and, uh, and move to, um, one point ten after discussion with our legal and the union. Okay, so we're gonna table one point nine and we're going to open up one point one zero.
Can we take a quick ten minute break?
Yes, we're gonna take a ten minute break. Yes, we kind of had to run there, so. So we'll be back ten minutes, guys.
This conference will now be recorded.
Are we good? We're recording? Okay, so we're gonna open up one point one zero for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove all Lander County employees, volunteers, full-time, part-time, and seasonal, including those paid by Lander County Funds in all departments, including but not limited to Lander County Administration Office, Lander County Finance Department, Lander County Managers Office, Lander County District Attorney's Office, Argent Justice Court, uh, Austin Justice Court, Lander County Sheriff's Department, Battle Mountain, and Austin Roden Bridge, Battle Mountain, uh, and Lander County, let me see here, sorry, guys. And Austin Water and Sewer, Lander County Recorder's Office, Lander County Treasurer's Office, Lander County Accessors Office, Lander County Community Health, Lander County Recreation Center, Lander County Civic Center, Lander County Senior Center, Austin Senior Center, Battle Mountain, and Austin EMS Departments, Lander County Building Department, Lander County Planning Department, Lander County Clerk's Office, Office, uh, Austin and Battle Mountain Library Departments to be random drug tested pursuant into the Lander County Policy Section, two point nine points one one. So, go ahead and open it up and, uh, does the commission have any, uh, comments, questions to open it up? Okay, so I'll go ahead and turn it to you, sir.
I'm gonna turn it over to Bert and let him kind of go over what we discussed.
So, um. You got it. So what the discussion was is actually changing and I think the confusion with the board, the union, um, and our legal that represents us in negotiations is the delineation of safety sensitive, not so much being in the random pool of testing. So the union is in agreement and our, um, attorney that represents us for our union negotiations is in agreement that adding everybody to the random pool to randomly test any and all employees is perfectly fine, but putting them as safety sensitive, um, making that delineation they, they were not okay with because of some of the, um, things that come with that delineation, so. Um, but putting everybody in the random pool puts a little bit of work on HR, a little bit of lot because they have to put all them in. And then it, it is a third-party testing company that pulls names randomly, so it's not something that we do here locally. We don't get to pick who gets tested. It comes out of a third-party pool. They send us the jurors who needs to be tested. We have to test X amount of, uh, or percentage of people in that random pool. And, uh, and that's how we would move forward with this as well, if we were to put everybody into the random pool but not delineate them as safety sensitive, which is what item one nine was kind of more. Understood. So, um, we had this on our last meeting and there was a, a lot of discussion about it. I know Kathy and Mike, uh.
I heard it.
Yeah, you heard it, so, so we're gonna, we're just kind of here to hash it out and this is basically what we're saying is that anybody that takes a Lander County paycheck is gonna be susceptible to a random testing. Um, I, for one, is I'm in favor of it simply because I just think it's, uh, a responsible thing to do. It's how we keep everybody safe and there's no, nothing carved out to where somebody does, somebody doesn't. It's just, uh, I think it's a, a smart and, uh, yeah, a smart policy. So, uh. Commission, also, I would like to also read back in, uh, Judge Gandolfo's concerns. It was read into the last meeting that he expresses hesitation when, um, creating a manager authority for Lander County over the court employees that is seen, as it seems, counter to the findings in Sparks versus Sparks Union. Um, so I just, I wanted to make sure that that was brought back up. Uh, Judge Gandolfo asked me to bring that up, but I would also point out that they do receive a check from Lander County and, uh. Yeah, that's what I was gonna say. It's, I can appreciate, uh, I can appreciate what you're saying, but it's like, at the end of the day, uh, this commission is responsible for the finances and the policy of this county and, um. We can, uh, we can, if the Supreme Court does come down with a ruling, I would bring that back to you guys, but that would be what I would, for consideration. Yeah, exactly. So, uh, so, uh, commission, you guys have any questions or comments on the issue? Uh, is there anybody in the public that has, uh, comments or issues? Or questions?
Jenny Martin, I'm the court administrator for the Argent Justice Court. Um, I am here at the request of Judge Fortune and Judge Gandolfo because they are both at a judges conference right now. So I wanted to start off by letting you guys know because they don't want to come off, like, the courts are in disagreement with random drug testing or even classifying any of our positions as safety sensitive. There is this Supreme Court opinion that prohibits the county commissioners, county government from getting involved in any decisions that have to do with our employees. Um, our courts are not concerned that our employees wouldn't pass drug tests and anything like that. We have internal policies for that. Um, we just would like to urge you guys to take us out of this policy and allow us to continue on with our own internal policies which govern our employees because this is a little bit of an overreach to the county government within the judiciary. There is supposed to be, and it's laid out in the Supreme Court opinion, a separation of powers between the executive, the judicial, and the legislative branch. Um, the judicial employees also are not a part of the union. I understand we do collect a paycheck from Lander County, much like this court opinion in this court case did. Um, in this court opinion, it parses out the, what the county and city government can handle with the courts and what they cannot. They cannot interfere with any personnel policies or procedures, um, that apply to the courts or the court employees. Um, they can, however, manage the budget for the courts and that is what they do across the state. In this Supreme Court opinion, um, and I have copies for you guys. I don't know if you want me to pass them out. It's a long Supreme Court opinion or if you guys have already been given the Supreme Court opinion. Um, in the conclusion of the Supreme Court's opinion, it does say, "We affirm the portion of the district court's order prohibiting the city from interfering with the municipal court's management of its employees, enforcing or entering into collective bargaining agreements on behalf of the municipal court employees and applying Spark City Charter," and it goes into the, the Sparks, um, portions. Um, and like I said again, I'm here on behalf of the judges. That is my job. Both of your justices of the peace are at a mandatory limited, um, jurisdiction judge conference, and so we ask that you table this again, or if you pass it, you remove the courts and bring that back at a later time. I have been asked to let you know that, uh, the justice courts, as they stand right now, will not comply with it until they get further direction from the Supreme Court. And I did a little more digging after the Supreme Court order because this does happen to be a case that stemmed in Sparks, so it went to the second judicial district court in Washoe County. They made an order. It was appealed to the Supreme Court and then sent back down to the district court. I also have the order that came out after that where Washoe County District Court did file a decree saying, okay, we're separating it. The city of Sparks cannot over and interfere with the employees of the court system, but they can manage their budget. So I have all of that information for you guys also if you'd like it.
Okay.
Again, I am, I'm just here speaking on behalf of the courts and the judges.
But on that decision, that was more based off of requiring the court employees to join the union, right?
So it is, it, it started with one issue, yes. But the way that the Supreme Court order is written, it really concretes that they cannot, you, county commission, the city governments cannot have any interference at all with county or with court employees. They cannot tell judges how to manage their employees. They cannot tell judges how to reprimand them, drug test them, things like that. They manage our budget.
So is there
And again...
a policy for employees of the court for random drug testing?
So there is a policy of the judge that if there's suspicion, they're tested, yes. And I have talked to HR, we had an incident all summer where an employee had a minor fender bender in the parking lot. We reached out to HR and asked about drug testing, so we do comply with that. The order that came out after the Supreme Court opinion from the Second Judicial District Court allows the city government and the municipal court in Sparks to work more together. They said, okay, as long as you have policies and procedures within the court that allow for this, then we're fine, and we will remove you from the rest of this. And so I didn't bring copies of that order for all of you, but I can make them very quickly.
I have a question.
Yes.
So, does, at that point, does the justice court carry their own liability insurance? So if an employee gets in an accident, that is, let me, no, I know it's not you, so I'm asking, so an employee gets in an accident, and they're at fault, then the county's getting sued, correct? So, we're not responsible, however, we are liable for your employees, and I'm not directing that to you, I'm directing it in general. So unless, my suggestion would be unless you're, not you, you're, the courts want to hold their own liability insurance, that they would be fall under the same rules as us, since the taxpayers in Lander County are the ones who will be keeping the bill if there's an accident and we're found liable.
Something else I would like to point out is they are provided a county vehicle that is operated by them, so I'm not sure if that is a consideration. You know, I think it's operated fairly regularly, going to the trainings and...
That comes out of county budget.
Because at least I'm familiar with Max, when he got one of the county vehicles, he got it strictly from court fine money.
That is, continues to be the case.
And consequently, even if you're sitting there saying, hey, it's taxpayer dollars, well, no, that wasn't, that was actual court dollars. So, I, it's, it's concerning to me. May I suggest a compromise would be to not require the separate division of government to join, but invite them to and see if they might voluntarily join in just to save money, so that if everybody's in the same pool, I think the problem is, everybody's trying to say, no, this is my area of power, this is my area of power, and they're going back and forth. I would just like to see everybody get along, to be honest with you, and I can't see why that couldn't work.
I hear you, Bill, but just, I don't think it's a power flexing, this power or that power, it's just, I think it's, from, for this, in my perspective, it's just right. If you're gonna random drug test, you random drug test, everybody that draws, I mean, I don't, I don't see the harm in it. I honestly don't, because we're encouraging a work-free or a drug-free workplace, and I just can't for the life of me understand why somebody would want to be carved out of that. Yeah, I just don't. And it's like, it's, it's within, it's within our direction to be able to do it, and if the Supreme Court comes back and says, no, you can't do it, then, you know, we're corrected at that point, and then we make the correction. But I think from this point, I just think we need to adopt the policy county-wide.
Can I make one more comment?
Yes.
Commissioner Sparks, and again, I'm just a representative of the courts, doing my job. I know that the judges would ask again that this be tabled until they can be present. They are at a conference, this topic has come up at their conference, again, at their request, and they would also like a member from the Supreme Court to be present, the, for lack of a better word, their legal guru, John McCormick, to be present, to speak on behalf of the Supreme Court opinion also. So, one way or the other, you guys aren't gonna make your decision, one way or the other, whether to table it today, or pass it today, or deny it today, I just wanted to make sure that the courts and our opinions were heard.
Okay. Where are you guys' thoughts?
Well, for, I just bottomed on my thought, for legal, and I don't disagree with Brian, but on the legal part, regardless of who paid for the vehicle, if an employee from the court is in an accident and at fault, who's liable as far as insurance-wise? Is our pool pack, are we paying for it?
At the moment, we're paying for it, is my understanding. Separation could occur, and maybe the Supreme Court will require that. This is why I think this is silly, and why I'd like to be able to just say, why can't we all get along? Because you're gonna force them, the possibility is that you will force them into, and everybody, and them, meaning the court system, into asserting their authority. They, they, they really don't like having anybody interfere with the courts, that is the Nevada Supreme Court. Every time I look at a ruling, they're always zealous to defend the power of courts. And I'm trying to figure out, why do we even have the fight? Everybody probably wants to go ahead and do this, particularly after an accident. So, my suggestion would be first to postpone this one more time, so that they can have their counsel here, and you can hear all of those arguments. Further, we may find that they're, they've got their own policy which coincides with this, and which case, who cares? Everything will be fine. But I would prefer to try to work out some kind of compromise where we get the break that you get for having everybody on the same policy and not have to have everything divided up.
Okay, I think we got the point, Bill.
Yeah.
Mike, did you have a, did you have something you wanted to say?
So, could make the motion include them and still request that their legal come and give a presentation, then it would be agenda item to amend it, right?
Because if it's wrong
Yeah.
right? Because it's gonna have to come down as a, as a ruling, and then you just remove them from the thing, right? Am I right in when I say that?
Well, I understand it. And maybe Bill has some comment from the union side?
I do. Phil Herring, for the record, for operating engineers, I don't represent the court system, so however you guys play that out is up to you guys. Just want to make that clear, that I'm not trying to get involved in their testing at all. And as Bert said, we did discuss this, we're on board with the random testing, so, and we talk with Joe Burge with it. So however that plays out with the courts, that's gonna be here for you guys.
And then, and the other, then I'll just put it out there, we just, we pass it, we pass it for every county department other than the justice court, till they have their, until we have it, and if it's not, then we just add them to it. That's the other option. So, whatever you guys think is, thinks is more feasible, I guess, if you'd like to word it.
I would think liability-wise, you add them now, and the court, if the court says and slaps us, we reverse it, because at that point, then there's not a gap as far as the insurance part bothers me, it's very bothersome to me. And so I would rather cover ourselves until the court hearing, and if they come down and say we're in the wrong, then by all means, we'll correct it.
Okay.
It sounded to me like they weren't going to comply either way until they have a ruling from themselves.
Okay.
Them being included right now, I don't think is gonna harm anything, just for that fact that they don't plan on complying until they have their own ruling.
But I...
Am I...
Yeah, I do, I want to put on the record, though, this has been an issue back and forth with the courts, of whether they follow our policies or they don't follow our policies. But I do want to let you know that when there are new hires that are put in both those court systems, they follow our policies, because I do the free drug testing, everything they follow and they apply to that, and I said, even if with the post-accident and the reasonable suspicion. So, they are following our policies on that side of it.
Yeah, what's the question? Do we actually, do we just re-employ you?
Yes, we do, for when we do new hires.
Pre-employment.
Right, pre-employment, and you sign a paper stating that you will not... And they sign a paper saying that they abide by our policies. Right, so... Every one of these court employees have.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that's correct, and they do handle our pre-employment, and as I stated, when there was an incident, I believe last summer, last fall, we did reach out to HR and ask for direction on drug testing, because it happened on county property. But yes, Ms. Ringus, you are correct, the court's intention right now with the judicial officers in place right now, and the court says they stand, is that we will not comply with, with what you pass, and we'll just get direction from the Supreme Court.
Okay, okay. So, any other question? Yes?
You say, anybody that you get a check, but I don't see the district court or the juvenile office in this list.
District court and juvenile are not paying for it, but they get a paycheck. You send them money. We give them forty percent of our tax dollars. We buy them vehicles, just what you use, if they get in an accident, we buy them vehicles. So, they would, I would think, would have fallen under this as well, to some degree, I think they should. I, I don't disagree with you, but they don't... The district court does.
Thank you, Alina. We can't set policy on another county.
No, yeah, we can't, so...
So if there's no other questions, I'll hear a motion, in which way we want to move.
A motion to approve
All second.
The, as presented, with all listed employees, as read onto the record.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? And a second, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Okay. Thank you, Phil. All right, so, we're gonna move on. One-point-one-one for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, the job description for the assistant county manager's position. So we had this on the last meeting, there was a, we wanted a couple things added to the job description, and I believe that's, has been done, let me see here. Any of the commissioners have any questions? On it? We had asked for, the two additional items was, we had asked for that they are an at-will employee, so no contract, right? It's, and that we, that they basically be interviewed or evaluation by the Board of County Commissioners. So, it's a little bit, that's a little bit tricky with the fact that we, we give Bert's evaluation to him, that employee would fall under Bert as his, Bert would be his superior, which he would give the evaluation, so it's almost like an employee getting two evaluations. So, my thought on it was, is why couldn't we, when we do our evaluation of Bert, now he has an extended person under his, under his supervision? If we see problems with it, the evaluation would be, would be given to Bert, if we see things that we don't like coming out of the county manager's position, right? It's like, why would we tell that guy? We tell his superior. Like, if we don't like these happenings, this needs to be improved, or what? Anybody have anything to say about that?
Well, we tried to thread the needle on that with this by making that interaction with the assistant county manager, and you guys approved by me first. So, you know, I'm having, if you guys are having issues with, with me or with the assistant county managers or the operations of the county, we could have that discussion directly with me, and then that would then, you know, move forward into, into putting the assistant county manager in front of you guys, so it's within the job description and the purview to be in front of you guys, or in my absence, and you only have an assistant county manager that you guys would have that right to bring him in and/or her and have that evaluation, without double jeopardy, more or less, on the, on that position, you know? Because every other position, whether it's rec center, manager, public works, senior center, civic center, all of them only get one evaluation, we're setting up the assistant county manager for two. So, that would almost be at the, at the call of you guys, and then either at my absence or with, or with my, yeah, or with, with my approval kind of coming before you guys, so it isn't the double jeopardy, and that's what we tried to, tried to meet all them parameters in this description.
So, any questions or concerns about that, or? Does the public have any questions or comments on the issue? Okay. I'm just looking through here to make sure. So how did we, how did we word it in the actual job description?
It should be at the bottom of that first paragraph.
Which?
Sorry, I don't have my agenda up on my computer right now, I'm looking at Real Pros. It's on, right, under the first pair, so basically
Under definition?
It's, yeah, the very last, I think, last couple sentences there, if I recall.
May get inspected.
Okay, so, are you guys good with that?
Yeah.
Based on the discussion?
Okay, good.
So, if there's no questions, we'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve the job description as presented for the assistant county manager position.
All seconded.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Okay, we'll move on to two-point-one, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove, resolution twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four dash oh-three, directing apportionment of net proceeds received in the month of June two thousand and twenty-four.
I can solve in for the record, this is for net proceeds that we received. We got them a little later than we normally do, but we finally received them, so this is the, to approve that apportionment.
What is China Springs?
It's the juvenile, I don't know exactly where it's located, but we're mandated to give them a portion of this.
It's mostly south of Carson City, it's for juvenile delinquents, would be the best old-fashioned term to use.
Juve Hall.
Yeah, but it's, it's a little, it's more nuanced than that. They do try to treat them with whatever they might have, you know, things like that. I mean, there's counseling and so forth, but they are not free to come and go, so that's why I say it's probably best to just think of it as a juve hall.
All right, any other questions on the apportionment? Any public comment? Okay, I'll hear a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution, revolution.
Resolution.
Resolution. I'll get it out in a second. Okay. Twenty-twenty-four dash oh-three, directing appointment of net proceeds received in the month of twenty-two, of June two thousand and twenty-four.
Anybody have a motion, is there a second?
I believe it has to be read.
The whole thing has to be read.
Has to be read into the record.
Who would like to read it? Dee, would you like to read it?
Where is it? Okay, the resolution budget augmentation. All right.
No, that's the budget augment, it would be the one coming for it.
The one before, oh, okay, not the whole resolution, do the board of Lander County Commissioners?
Bottom two-point-one, if you click that attachment, that whole...
Oh, okay, that's where it was. Okay, resolution two-oh-two-four dash zero-three of the Board of the Lander County Commissioners, a resolution directing the apportionment of net proceeds received in the month of June two thousand and twenty-four, whereas on June twelfth, two thousand and twenty-four, the Lander County Treasurer received twenty-one million, nine hundred and ninety-seven thousand, five hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seven cents of net proceeds, and whereas it is a desire of the Lander County Board of Commissioners to appropriate the net proceeds as follows. Mandated amounts and funds. The commission fees, general fund three percent, six hundred and fifty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-six dollars and seventy-four cents into fund zero-zero-one-dash-zero-zero-zero dash three-one-three-four-five. Assessors tech fees of two percent, amount four hundred and thirty-nine thousand, nine hundred and fifty-one dollars and sixteen cents into fund three-zero-zero, zero-zero-zero, three-two-two-two-three. China Springs, amount twenty-six thousand, one hundred and ninety-six dollars and seventeen cents. Fund zero-zero-one, zero-zero-zero, three-one-three-four-zero. State indigent medical, state medical indigent, amount five hundred and ninety-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars and sixteen cents into fund zero-zero-four, zero-zero-zero, three-one-three-four-zero. State indigent, in the amount of one hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-seven dollars and forty-four cents into fund zero-zero-four, zero-zero-zero, Capital acquisitions, in the amount of two hundred and seventy thousand, nine hundred and ninety-four dollars and eighty-eight cents into fund zero-three-one-dash-zero-zero-zero dash three-one-dash-three-four-zero. Landfill, in the amount of four hundred and fifty-one thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and fourteen cents into fund zero-one-one-dash-zero-zero-zero dash three-one-three-four-zero. Hospital, four million, three hundred and eighty-four thousand, two hundred and ninety dollars and seventy-four cents into fund zero-six-zero, zero-zero-zero dash three-one-three-four-zero. Total, six million, six hundred, I mean, six million, nine hundred and sixty dollars, one hundred and eighty, plus forty-five discretionary. Anyway, the CCP fund, six million dollars into fund zero-zero-five-dash-zero-zero-zero dash three-one-three-four-zero. Buildings and equipment fund... Buildings and equipment fund, three million into zero two nine dash zero 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 dash three one, three four zero. Indigent fund, thirty seven thousand three hundred and seventy dollars and sixty three cents into zero zero three, zero zero zero, three one, three four zero. Culture and Recreation Fund, one million dollars, zero five two dash zero 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 dash three one, three four zero. NPM Rainy Day Fund, five million into fund two zero zero dash zero 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 dash three one, three four. Total discretionary is fifteen million thirty seven thousand three hundred and seventy dollars and sixty three cents. Total twenty one million nine hundred and ninety seven dollar, uh, thousand five hundred and fifty eight dollars and seven cents. Whereas the Lander County Board of Commissioners desires to use discretionary net proceeds to fund the CCP funds, zero zero five, Buildings and Equipment Fund, zero two nine, Indigent Fund, zero zero three, Cultural Recreation Fund, zero five two, and the NPA Rainy Day Fund, two hundred. Be it further resolved that the fiscal officer and the treasurer directed to distribute the payment for the net proceeds according to the schedule, passed and adopted on the twenty seventh day of June two thousand twenty four.
Thank you, Dee, that was a whole lot of numbers.
Yep.
And then on, uh, this, uh, point of cor- or correction on the CCP fund, it was read in as zero zero five, it should be zero five five dash zero zero dash three one, three four. Good job, Dee, appreciate it. So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Moving on. Uh, for discussion and pro- uh, possible action to approve, disapprove Resolution twenty twenty four dash oh four, a resolution to augment the fiscal year twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four Lander County budget.
So my consultant for the record again, this is for the jobs update that was done in the courtroom that was not budgeted for, and so we have to augment for that.
It was for what, I'm sorry?
The update in the courtroom for the jobs.
Any questions? If not, I'll hear a motion.
Motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty four dash zero four, a resolution to augment the fiscal year twenty twenty three dash twenty twenty four Lander County budget.
And we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What's that?
To read it into the record.
Resolution number twenty twenty four dash zero four. The resolution to augment the fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget of Lander County. Whereas Nevada's Administrative Code three five four point four one zero set forth requirements for augmenting the budget with available resources. And whereas total resources of the court facilities capital fund, Lander County were budgeted to be nine hundred and seventy five thousand one hundred and two dollars on July first, two thousand twenty three. And whereas the total available resources are now determined to be one million seven hundred and sixty dollars. Whereas said additional and unanticipated resources are as follows, the interest revenue of twenty five thousand six hundred and fifty eight. Whereas there is a need to apply these excess funds in the court facilities capital fund for an increase in expenditures of one hundred and seventy five thousand to upgrade the courtroom's AV equipment. Now, therefore, it is clearly resolved that Lander County shall augment its twenty twenty three, twenty twenty four budget by appropriating twenty five thousand six hundred and fifty eight dollars for the use in the court facilities capital fund, thereby decreasing the fund balance from nine hundred and seventy five thousand one hundred and two to eight hundred and twenty five thousand seven hundred and sixty. A detailed schedule is attached to the resolution and by reference is made part thereof. It is further resolved that the fiscal officer shall forward the necessary document to the Department of Taxation in the state of Nevada, passed and adopted this twenty seventh day of June two thousand twenty four.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thanks, Mike. All right, so, we're gonna move on to three point one for discussion and possible action to approve, disapprove Resolution number twenty twenty four dash oh two, to levy the twenty twenty four dash twenty twenty five tax rates and other matters properly related there to.
Juicy Johnson for the record, so the motion just needs to be read in for the twenty four, twenty five.
Okay. Um, so, let me see here. So I'll go ahead and I'll make the motion, I'll take my turn.
Yeah, so it's a nice guy.
A motion to, I move to approve Resolution number twenty twenty four dash oh two per NRS three six one point four six oh. The Board of County Commissioners of Lander County now that, pending before the Nevada Tax Commission, the combined ad valorem property tax rate, that they levy, that the levy of taxes in Lander County for the fiscal year period beginning July first, two thousand twenty four through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty five, shall be in accordance with the following schedule for each fund on one hundred dollars of property. General Fund, one point two six seven. Road and Bridge, zero point one nine oh nine. Indigent, zero point zero seven five five. Ag Extension, zero point zero one five zero. Aging Services, zero point zero eight five zero. Airport, zero point zero four zero zero. Cultural and Recreation, zero point zero eight nine five. Use Services, zero point zero 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 nine. State Indigent, uh, zero point zero one five zero. State Medical Energy, zero point zero six five five. Capital Acquisition, zero point zero three zero zero. Uh, Lander County Landfill, zero point zero five zero zero. Hospital, zero point five one zero nine. School, zero point seven five zero zero. State Rate, zero point one seven zero zero. Base Rate is three point three five five two. Specials, Austintown, which is zero point two two one three. Austintown, zero point zero five four two. Austin Sewer, zero point zero one three five. Battle Mountain Town, zero point zero five zero zero. Kingston Town, zero point three zero four eight. Recording requested by Lander County Inspector's Office, fifty state route three oh five, Battle Mountain, Nevada, eight nine eight two oh. Uh, Resolution number twenty, let me see here, that was the one right there, right? Was that it?
That was it.
Okay, so the next one is for the next one, yeah?
Yeah.
So I, uh, so I motion, I make a motion to approve? We have a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Now we'll move to three point three point two, that work, huh?
Yeah.
Okay. All those numbers got me all disfigured. Three point two, for discussion of possible action regarding letter on one year delinquent taxes per NRS three six one point five six four eight and NRS three six one point five six five.
So this is just my affidavit for me to the board, that I sent out my one year delinquent letters per statute and how many were returned as undeliverable. And I believe you have to read the letter.
Okay. Let's see here. Just getting new, used to the new system here, so three, so one year. Okay, so I'll make a motion, uh, that we approve, um, the one year delinquent taxes per NRS three six one five six four eight and NRS three six one point five six five. And I'll read the letter into the record. Uh, from Lander County Treasurer, Juicy Johnson, May twenty second, two thousand twenty four, to Board of Lander County Commissioners, regarding issuance of affidavit and legal advertisement of delinquent taxpayers pursuant to NRS three six one point five six four eight. The undersigned does hereby affirm that each taxpayer was given due notice by first class mail of the delinquency with respect to each parcel. Six hundred ninety one parcels were delinquent in payment of taxes due for twenty twenty three, twenty four. Three hundred eighteen envelopes were mailed, twenty one envelopes were returned as undeliverable with no forwarding addresses. As of May twenty s- two, two thousand twenty four, sixty nine notices were within the envelopes determined as undeliverable with no forwarding address as of May twenty second, two thousand twenty four. Very truly yours, Juicy Johnson, uh, Lander County Treasurer and Expedient Tax Receiver.
Can I second that?
Yep, so we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, moving on. Three point three, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove adjustment to the role.
So these are all the adjustments that were made for the twenty three, twenty four year.
It as well needs to be read in?
Yes.
Somebody else wanna tackle that one?
I'll go again. A motion. A motion to approve the adjustments to the role. Specific, can I go with a specific request to be placed on the agenda? Is that what I'm reading?
Um, I believe you have to approve each, the, each year and the amount for each one.
So where's that in?
On the secured role. You have secured and unsecured.
So we have, uh.
I believe the, I have the motion in there for you guys.
With the vertical?
Yeah, it's on page, it's page four of that attachment, Mike, and you can rotate it to be the right side of. Want me to motion it?
Right, where do you?
This one?
Yeah, where do you roll it up?
Yeah, I'll go, I'll go ahead and make the motion. Um, let me see, for discussion, let me see here, so we're gonna make a motion to approve, uh, the adjustments to the role.
The secured role.
What's that?
The secured role.
The secured role.
The secure, oh, so we have to do each as its own motion? Okay, so I move to approve the adjustments to the secured role as follows. A, approve adjustments to twenty twenty one dash twenty two secured role in amount of twenty nine dollars and fifty nine cents. Negative, right?
Yes.
Okay. B, approve, uh, adjustments to twenty twenty two, twenty three secured role, twenty nine, fifty nine negative. And C, approve adjustments to twenty three, twenty four secured role, uh, negative one thousand four hundred and three dollars and eight cents. The total combined adjustment for the secured role during twenty twenty three, uh, twenty four fiscal year is negative one thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars and twenty six cents. There's a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Say, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Now we'll move, so now we have to make the motion on the unsecured. So I move to approve the adjustments to the unsecured role as follows. A, approve adjustments to twenty twenty three, twenty four secured role. Should that read as unsecured role?
Yes.
Okay, so move, uh, approve adjustments to twenty twenty three, twenty four unsecured role. Uh, the amount is negative two thousand three hundred and forty nine dollars and ninety two cents. Total combined adjustments for the unsecured role during fiscal year twenty twenty three, twenty four is negative two thousand three hundred and forty nine dollars and ninety two cents. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. So now we'll move to three point three. Oh, sorry, three point four.
Which, there's one more.
There's the, um, special assessments.
I'll do that one.
You whoop it on that one.
I'll make, I'll make, give it to you, adjustments to the special assessment on secure role, um, or clerical error on TV tax for a negative seven hundred and thirty six dollars. Um, the total combined adjustments, the special assessment on, um, the secured role for twenty twenty three, twenty four, F Y, negative seven hundred and thirty six dollars.
We have a motion, is there a second? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Pat. We'll move to three point four. For discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove the transfer of delinquent water sewer accounts to the twenty twenty three, twenty four secured tax rule as reconciled on June twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four. A, to transfer the reconciled accounts according to Lander County Code, section thirteen point oh four point oh five oh, uh, section seven, uh, I guess that'd be subsection E, Battle Mountain. And B, to transfer the reconciled accounts to, according to Lander County Code, section one three point oh eight point oh five oh, Austin Water and Sewer.
It's all our delinquent water.
So do you just read the, where you have the motion for the commissioners, do you have to re- read the individual people, do you?
No, just the motion.
All right, I'll make the motion, uh, to, um, I move to approve the reconciled delinquent water and sewer account to be transferred from Battle Mountain Water and Sewer to the secured twenty twenty three, twenty four tax rule per Lander County Code, section thirteen point zero four point zero five oh, subsection seven, um, E, in the amount not to exceed seventy three thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and eighty nine cents reconciled on June twenty fourth, two thousand twenty four.
I'll second it.
Okay, so we have a motion and a sec, I was just seeing what was read here, but that's.
Cause we have to do a separate one for Battle Mountain and one for Austin.
Was that the right one, Juicy?
Yeah.
Okay, perfect. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Okay, um, Dee will be a big spender, say aye. I move to approve the reconciled delinquent water and sewer accounts to be transferred from Austin Water and Sewer to the secured twenty twenty three, twenty four tax rule per Lander County Code, section thirteen point oh eight point zero five zero, in the amount not to exceed four thousand sixty dollars and ninety three cents reconciled on June twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four.
Okay, so we have a motion, is there a second?
Okay.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. On three point five, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove payment for delinquent water and sewer accounts for twenty twenty three, twenty four and reconcile on June twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four. A, to pay accounts according to Lander County Code, section one three point oh four point oh five oh, seven E, Battle Mountain. B, to pay accounts according to Lander County Code, section thirteen point oh eight point oh five oh, Austin Water and Sewer.
So this is for me to pay the water and sewer accounts.
I will. I don't need to do it with this one?
You can do it with this.
Okay, I move to approve the payment to the Battle Mountain Water and Sewer in the amount not to exceed seventy three thousand nine hundred and eight dollars and eighty nine cents reconciled on June twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four for the Battle Mountain Sewer and Water delinquent accounts ninety days or older per Lander County Code, section thirteen point oh four point oh five oh, section sec- seven E.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, I move to approve the payment in the amount not to exceed four thousand sixty dollars and ninety three cents reconciled on June twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four to the Austin Water and Sewer for delinquent accounts ninety days or older per Lander County Code, section thirteen point zero eight point zero five.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Three point six, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove. A, the list of tax delinquent properties for sale in Lander County. B, an order directing the Lander County Treasurer permission to sell the delinquent tax properties, which is pursuant to NRS three six one point five nine five.
So these are just the properties that I wanna put up on our next tax sale?
So I'll make a motion, do we need, can we, you need A as A and then B as B or?
Um.
Each, as a single motion or can we just do it all?
I think you can do it all as one.
Okay, so I approve, uh, I make a motion to approve, uh, the list of tax delinquent properties for sale. And I move to, um, approve, an order to be entered on the record directing the county treasurer permission to sell the delinquent tax properties listed for sale according to NRS three six one five nine five.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Okay. Three point seven, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove payment to the Lander County Treasurer for payment of taxes held for twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five.
So these are just payments that I hold for people for their twenty four, twenty five tax year.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve payment to the Lander County Treasurer in the amount of, um, eleven thousand three hundred and fifty five dollars and seventy seven cents for taxes collected in advance from specific taxpayers for the twenty twenty four, twenty five tax year.
I'll second it.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Move to three point H, for discussion of possible action to approve, disapprove revising the county investment policy.
So this is, I updated the investment policy, I think it was last updated in two thousand thirteen or fourteen, I believe. Um, and it keeps us in line with what the state allows currently and gives us more diversification to invest.
Okay, so does anybody have any questions on this? It is, since it, it was coming from an old policy and now we're updating it, is there, how's everything look? Anybody have any questions on it? Okay, does, uh, public have any comments or questions on it? Okay, got a thumbs up out there? Okay, so I will hear a motion.
Motion to approve payment. One three eight, right? One three eight or seven?
Three point eight.
To approve revising the county investment policy.
Okay, so we have a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
And a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks, Juicy.
Thank you.
We'll move to correspondence and reports, uh, correspondence reports, futures, agenda, items.
Question on the horses, what we're doing with the horses.
We'll have that on the Austin meeting, we'll have an update for you there.
Okay.
All right, so I guess this is where I suggest that we put the dispensary on the ballot. To have it. As an advisory question only.
That'd be a request illegal, because I can't.
Okay, um.
Or how am I supposed to?
Let's make it open, give you guys maximum, simply. Put on the ballot and a question. Regarding whether or not. To have dispensaries. And related. Business activities. Uh, in Lander County.
Just an advisory question?
Why are we putting it as an advisory question?
That's why I said you need to leave it open on that.
Wait a second, no, wait, wait, because. Correct me if I'm wrong, the motion was to approve what we had, was it not?
And then, yes, and then to appu- an advisory, an advisory question.
An advisory. Would be problematic.
Was that part of the, your motion? Because your motion was approved.
Yeah, well.
But the discussion was that we could still put it on the ballot and ha- and ask.
So they did have the discussion to still put it on the ballot, her motion was to approve the item, you guys did have a discussion, that's why I said if this item, if you're wanting something different, you need to add that. Her motion was to.
Approve it as presented. Yeah, and there was a lot of discussion, but I asked for clarification, because there were some, there was not a vocal record of what the actual vote was. But it actually showed that it passed, her.
Yeah, the ordinance has passed.
But there was also the discussion that because we made it be through January, we could put it on the ballot.
No, completely, that was, that was, we were looking at it possibly as.
She's correct.
Yes.
He clarified that.
As an event.
So, so, I'm, 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 I, I didn't want to stop the progress, my question to Bill was. Can we pass it now and still go on? Bill's recommendation, though I understood it, was as an advisory question, is if this is the way the la- the citizens of Lander County want to proceed.
Yeah.
Not off the vote, not off the motion.
Trouble is, when I said that. The vote stood at two in favor. And that was it. Okay, um. Your vote had not been recorded, JR, you were one of the silent ones. And. So at that point, yes, you could do an advisory, at this point, you really can't do an advisory.
So that should have been stated.
Yes, it should have been.
Know that. We were still counting votes.
Because there was, they, I was informed to make sure that they're vocal about the vote, that's all I did. Based on the original, because there was only one motion at that time, and I want a clarification to make sure how many. Absolutely, A to N A were recorded into the record. And that's why I was just.
I was under misunderstanding, I, I misunderstood.
Misinformed.
Okay, regardless of mistakes, at this point. You would. Realistically, I mean, you could put on an advisory question, but it'd be an advisory question, should we repeal an ordinance?
So I don't think that's okay, so what Commissioner Toff wanted, he asked you if we could. Continue, move forward with this item. Proceed with it, pass it, with the understanding that it wouldn't start until January first.
Yes.
But also at the same time, put an advisor.
And that's exactly, yes.
On the ballot.
That's what I, where I was at, Brian.
Went to where the community. Was in favor of not doing it, could this come back?
Yes, that's exactly.
Yes.
You said yes. And yes, and that's.
That was what we asked.
That's how you want to do it.
That's how you.
That's what I was under the understanding that we, that's what, that was.
Yes.
The way I took. For your advice.
I, I.
Yeah, it's passed.
Well, the motion passed.
The motion passed, we're not arguing that.
Not at all, but it was, the thing was, afterwards, at the end here. Whomever had concerns could request that it be put on as an advisory. And if there was an overwhelming no against it, we could always bring that back and.
If you request it.
If it, the back, yes.
Not be used in.
Yes. Exactly.
That was what.
But it was put, yes, and then he said, yes.
Does that put everything on, because we, we were on.
No, we're moving forward with the ordinance, it doesn't take effect until January one.
Okay.
So you still have plenty of time for that.
It's just, the advisory was, because.
If you have an advisory, let's just. Play it out, if you have an advisory and the advisory vote comes back and. People indicate they don't want it. You would have enough time. From that vote, at least from the nominal vote, maybe not from certification. But from the nominal vote, you'd have enough time to do a, a repealed or an ordinance and pass it. Before January first. Arrived.
Or discussion, yes.
If you wanted to.
Yes. So.
It's just advisory.
Is that what you're looking for?
Yes.
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 Okay. I'm still suggest. So we don't get in trouble. With the AG, since we've been discussing this, this is all, you know, a future agenda item. You might want to make the agenda item more open than that, but I don't know, that's up to you. Is that how you want it?
They just want it as an advisory.
Just an advisory, okay.
You made that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, you know.
They just want to know what the community thinks.
Right, we just want to know what that community thinks.
No, it just, exactly, it doesn't change anything, it's just.
Yeah, it's just.
It's passed.
Yeah. At this stage of the game, it's already passed.
Yes.
Oh, I, I get that, it's just, uh.
That's why you said it, an advisory, so.
Yeah, just trying to wrap my head around it, anyway, that's fine, so is there any others, uh, on? Let me see here. Any other thing on Commissioner Reports, um, future agenda items?
What items are we looking at putting on the Austin agenda? Can we discuss that, or? I mean, like, are we?
Assesses in the time.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I'm.
Yeah, I don't have that. Um, Brian, do you have another one that you need, you were going to request?
Oh, yes, I'd like to put on, uh. First evaluation. Um, and I'd like, how does everybody want to do it this year? I mean, I've never been a stickler on. The format or formalities, how we evaluate our county manager, but, um. I don't know if you just want to be able to evaluate them the way you see fit personally to evaluate them.
I use the sheet that was provided last year, uh, I'm open to either. I'd like the sheet at least for.
So I, I will forward all of you guys, all the different evaluation sheets we have, you guys can use them, um, Brian didn't use them last year, he did it kind of a different.
How are we allowed to do that? Because I haven't liked the way he did it.
However you want.
I'll do it out of you, don't get to the.
Okay, I've never done it, so I don't know.
Well, I'll send the sheet, um, if you don't want to use the sheets, you just want to go in the process.
Okay, yeah.
That's fine.
Alright, yeah, because I have no clue.
Do we only have a week to do?
Do we do it like they do the gladiators, thumbs up or thumbs down?
So are we gonna, are we planning on putting it on the upcoming agenda, so we just need time to prepare for his evaluation?
So I will send you all the sheets and everything now, I, his actual evaluation will be on the next meeting. We, um, because you're giving us direction before, we will do the notice to him that we are required by law to do. Um, we'll give it to him, so you will do his actual formal evaluation.
In Austin.